Thank you for your interest in our meeting, those of you who are here tonight and those of you who are at home watching. And I apologize that we were a little bit late tonight from our closed session. The first item of business is the roll call, please.
Councilmember Norton, Councilmember Story, Councilmember Vator, Councilmember Termini, Mayor Harland.
Here. Well, everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item that we're going to have tonight is a presentation in appreciation to Carl Forrest. Is he here tonight?
Presentation, that's scary.
Carl has served on the Commission on the Environment from August 2009 through December 2012, during this week, so the cameras. And we very much appreciate your work on that committee, and we'd like to thank you publicly and ask you to talk a little bit about the committee and what you enjoy doing.
Thank you. I think the most important thing about the committee was the opportunity for a group of citizens to get together and to support the council and the community in building sustainable practices, everything from a landmark styrofoam ban, which started before I was on the group, but continuing with working with plastics and storm runoff and water conservation and all the different areas that come before us that we could have a little bit of say and help to build some support for building a sustainable community. So, that's really.
Thank you very much. We sure appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, we have Ann Nicole and Peter Roddy, who served on the Traffic and Parking Commission. And Mr. Roddy, is he here? I don't think he could make it tonight, so we will give him his. Sir, everybody, Ann, come on up. Thank you very much for your service to Capitola. And Ann has served from May 2009 through December 2012. And we really appreciate you serving on this commission, and we'd like to give you a public thank you and give you a chance to talk a little bit about what your experience was like.
Well, I'm just glad that I see even on tonight's agenda that the issue of parking and traffic is still continuing, as it has ever in Capitola and probably will forever, but progress is good.
Thank you very much for your service. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ann.
I'm going to ask the chief to come up, and we'd like to have to do, add two things to the agenda. And one is a moment of silence for Santa Cruz Police Sergeant Lauren Butch Baker and Detective Elizabeth Butler. And then we're going to have a little tribute to former councilmember and mayor Phil Walker.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Rudy Escalante, your Chief of Police, I apologize for my voice. It's been a difficult couple of days. Before we, I asked for a moment of silence, I would just like to thank all the communities for their support. This has been a very difficult time through this disaster. All the agencies have come together and have really been working hard to support Santa Cruz Police Department. For people to know, Capitola has assisted the department by providing security at special events, responding to calls for services available, and any other thing that we can do for them. I personally worked with Sergeant Baker for 28 years. He has been a strong friend of mine, and I will miss him terribly. Detective Butler, I've known her entire career. She was a very strong detective and just an enormous person with a loving heart. And so, we will miss them both. And I would like to just ask for a moment of silence for them and their families during this tragic time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Well, we've had some colorful history in Capitola, and it's really fun to learn about past councilmembers and past councils and their actions, and some of the things that went on to make this town what it is today and what an asset. And on Wednesday, February 13th, after a period of ill health, Philip J. Walker, who served as mayor of Capitola for the terms of 1966 to 68, that used to be two-year terms, and 1970 to 72, passed away at Dominican Hospital. Born in San Jose in 1924, Phil came to Santa Cruz County in 1947 and made Capitola his home in 1956. Perhaps Phil's greatest accomplishment in public life was the establishment of the Capitola Museum. It first opened in the back room of the Chamber of Commerce office at 115 Capitola Avenue in July 1966. After much difficulty from the city council, the present city museum was established by Phil in March, by Phil in March 1968, literally donating the building and acting as curator until 1979, gratis. The museum established the foundation for the significance in Capitola history that prevails to this day. His devotion to local history stopped the Rispin Mansion from being demolished during his period in office. City Parks, Perry Park, Hinn Park, Depot Park, Noble Gulch Park are among his other accomplishments. Perry Park property was nearly an 18-unit apartment building. That's a little park behind Nob Hill. Hinn Park, at the end of Fairview Avenue, was going to be a two-car garage. He gifted his share to the city in 1991, officially making it a city-owned park. Without acknowledgement, Depot Park sat bare before he became involved. Other councilmembers wanted to sell what is now Noble Gulch Park for private development. The large redwood tree at Bay and Monterey is his work. And his son wrote, gave us this information. And he said, "I hope the present and future city leaders will preserve and follow Mayor Walker's legacy." And we have a couple of binders of city newspaper articles in the museum. And if anyone would ever like to go and read up on their favorite topic in history, you're more than welcome to do so. It's very fascinating. And I'm going to read a little bit about, about Phil Walker from one. Phil Walker, 208 Central Avenue. Capitola enters the race for a Capitola City Council seat with the pledge that if he is elected, his $75 a month salary will go for beautification of the city. Quote, "I would like to see something done for the beautification of Capitola, and that is where I would like to see my $75 go if elected." "I would like to see something done for the beautification of Capitola, and that is where I would like to see my $75 go. I'm definitely not interested in the salary, as I feel, I feel a citizen has a civic duty to serve without compensation. If elected, I would prefer to put my salary into projects for beautification of the city. In order to achieve a better understanding between the people of Capitola and the complex urban society as it is developing in this area, I would strive to keep the issues in the open and clarify what the issues are. I would also examine the points involved in the, and the consequences, and act as an intermediary between the ideas of the voters and the ideas of the governing agencies, both city and county, and to use common sense and an open mind in making decisions," he said. Walker is a native of San Jose, graduated from San Jose High School, attended San Jose College before entering the Army Air Force in 1942. He served for three years being stationed in London and then returned to San Jose State to continue his studies in the natural sciences. He came to Santa Cruz in 1947, working for the time as a radio operator for the California Highway Patrol. He then joined the state, being in the Santa Cruz area with the Division of Forestry, of Division of Beaches and Parks, before joining the Department of Motor Vehicles. He worked as a licensed examiner for nine years, assigned to several stations, and working last at the Santa Cruz office for two and a half years. He resigned in 1959 to manage his rental properties. He is currently working as a volunteer with the state of Nevada in setting up a fossil museum near central Nevada. He's a member of the Eastern California Museum Association and the R.C. Baker Memorial Association. He's indicated an interest in exploring the possibilities of establishing a Capitola museum, stressing the area's history. He and his wife Roberta moved to Capitola in 1956. They have two children, Kathy, a student at SoCal High School in Rex, a Capitola Elementary School student. He attends SoCal Congregational Church. And along with the information that his son sent us, he's sent us an interesting article about the museum and about the planting of trees. And when he was mayor, he was elected and then became mayor, said, "Mayor Phil Walker of Capitola is not a man to give up easily. Despite several turn-downs by the rest of the Capitola City Council, the mayor has not abandoned his efforts to keep about an acre of city-owned property at Bay and Monterey Street in open space. The council has authorized sale of the property, which includes about six lots for single-family homes. Walker has tried several times to get his fellow councilmen to reconsider, but they don't see it his way. Most recently, the council turned down a request by real estate man James Redding to halt action on the sale of the lots until the new city open space committee has had a chance to recommend which open spaces to save. Walker simply cannot understand why, if the other councilmen are really concerned about saving open space, they won't save the Bay and Monterey corner, Avenue corner for posterity." Quote, "They're talking about an open space," he said the other day in an interview on the site, spreading his arms and adding, "This is open space. They own right now." He pointed out that the Bay and Monterey property is readily accessible from two major streets, unlike two other small city parks, Perry Park on SoCal Creek and Clifton Heights Playground in a residential area. As for possible uses of the property, Walker sees it more as a bit of green open space than a playground. Like Jim Redding said, "They could get the Boy Scouts to plant trees, a lot of them, say about 200, just at random," he suggests. One reason Walker hates to see the park go is that the city planted two trees on one corner of it, and he likes them. There is a small but thriving Monterey pine and a young redwood. The latter might never be noticed in the San Lorenzo Valley, but it's a nice addition to the middle of Capitola, the mayor thinks. Two city employees planted the trees under his personal direction. And then there are the native trees on the site, a sizable pine, several tall cottonwoods, quite a few willows, and a large handsome California live oak, all are located on the banks of Noble Gulch. This geographical feature divides the city property from neighboring properties, then disappears into a culvert that carries its stream under Monterey Avenue. "There could be problems from flooding of Noble Gulch," Walker said, adding, "There isn't much in it now because it's been a dry year, but I've seen it full of water." Walker pointed out, Walker pointed out that there is also a city sewer easement across the property and a manhole giving access to the sewer. He thinks the sale of the lot could interfere with city access to this facility. That's when the city had its own sanitary sewer department. But this, this, that's kind of a crutch, he admitted. "My real argument is to save open space if we have it, and we have it here." He is willing to compromise. He suggests that the city might sell the more level northern portion of the property and save the steeper part nearest Bay Avenue. It's not a good, quote, "It's not good for building anyway," he said. "There's an access problem. Cars would have to back onto the street uphill. There have to be compromises on both sides, I feel. You just can't shoot from the hip and say, 'It's this way or not at all.'" He paused again by the young trees. "Look at these," he said. "In three years, they have doubled in size. I remember the day we put them in. I got them from one of my neighbors, and we hauled them up here. We had a little tree planting ceremony." So, anyway, he was, he did a lot of wonderful things for, for Capitola, and he had a wonderful life, and he died when he was 89 years old. And I just wanted to take some time to thank him. If the Nichols know anything about him and they'd like to say anything, you're more than, more than welcome to. Thank you. Thank you. I met, I met him a couple of years ago, and I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to interview him for the museum, so we would have it on tape.
We should contemplate renaming that park.
Yeah. I mean, it's, shows you how some things don't change very much.
And who were the other stubborn councilmembers at the time?
Yeah, we want names.
I'll get it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got a couple of them, but I'm not going to let it out right now.
Yeah. So, anyway, thanks for listening to that. The next item is additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any?
No, it's not changes.
Okay. Next item is for public comments. If anyone would like to address the council now, you're more than welcome to about any item, not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, please wait till we get to that, that item. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Brian Peoples. I'm from Aptos. I want to submit this to our clerk over here for the council members. My name's Brian Peoples. I'm from Aptos. I'm representing a group of parents, as well as a group of students called Aptos High School Rail the Trail Club. And essentially, what we're doing is we're getting the word out to the various stakeholders, and Capitola is a huge stakeholder here because of the rail that goes through virtually your town. And what we are promoting is to, basically, the state has provided $11 million that we initiate a train service, which we did. And we're, we don't owe them back that money, and we're recommending that we kill the tourist train, and we remove the tracks, and we move forward with putting in a bike and pedestrian trail. I think Capitola has a huge opportunity here in the sense of the property value, the increased tax revenue that you'll receive, the intersection improvements, such as, I'll give you some examples, and this isn't Capitola, but Seabright Brewery and Murray Avenue, the traffic congestion there. If we put in a bike path rather than the train, you could virtually have turn lanes, so you can improve along the entire section of this 32 miles, the surface street traffic. Anyways, I'm here to ask Capitola to begin to address this asset. You may disagree that a tourist train should be there. You may think that you could have a light rail system in there. You'll, if you read the studies, our population would not support it. Our county can't afford it. Our tracks can't handle a high-speed rail. The train could not go over five miles an hour because of the configuration of the rail. Aptos, we will benefit significantly if we get rid of those tracks. If I ride my bike today from Aptos to Santa Cruz versus riding my bike on a bike path that went through Capitola, and remember, the train track's perfectly level. It's perfectly level. I'd cut 30 minutes on my bike ride. That's huge. We're building a huge coalition. ADA, handicapped people are building, are saying, "Hey, this would be great." The Rotary Club, all the business communities. So, again, we're here, educate you, tell you about it. We really think Capitola should take a stance. If you want the train, if you want a tourist train, and you, and you think that you're going to have a bike path paralleling on your trestles there, that we're going to have $89 million to invest, so be it. Thank you.
Do you want to leave your name and phone number or email contact?
Yeah, and on the back of it is my name and phone number. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything about that? I know that part of the requirement of getting the state money was for, that there be a rail service for some period of time?
Not only the requirement of the purchase of the rail corridor, which we have obligation to, the CTC to pay back if it's pulled out, we also have an obligation of $5 million that was just brought in from the federal money that's brought in for, for that and the scenic trail. So, the likelihood of the rail disappearing is very, very slim.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Actually, I have it in writing from Ellen Perry, because I've been working with her for months on this. And it's in writing that what you said is untrue. So, I'd be more than willing to submit that.
Well, you're very welcome to, but I know Ellen personally, and she was, she was one of the advocates for purchases of rail corridor.
Correct.
And she, she signed on as, with agreement. So, I don't know what you're talking about.
And the agreement said, "Initiate service." And it was clearly stated that we do not have to maintain service. There's no stipulation that you continue train service. We shouldn't be subsidizing a tourist train. You're competing against roaring.
Did you know that this is a tourist town right here?
Is it what?
This is a tourist town.
Absolutely. It would be a great bike tourist town.
Okay.
But nobody's going to take a tourist train from Santa Cruz or Aptos to Capitola.
Yes, they will.
But they will, see, so, so you're an advocate of the train.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you, ladies and gentlemen? My name is Mike Lynn, Michael Lynn. I've been a resident here in Capitola for a little over two years. It's a splendid community. You run it very well. I own the Bay Bar and Grill, which is down in the Esplanade, along, beside Margaritaville and the other places down there. We've, I've had that place since 2010. Recently, there were a couple of things that have happened, and I want you folks to know in order that we squelch any rumors, because one of the, a person influential here in City Hall brought me a rumor. He said that, hey, there was a stabbing at Bay Bar. I said, "What?" So, I investigated that, and, and, of course, there was no stabbing at Bay Bar. There was a stabbing down the street, had no relationship to Bay Bar at all. The only thing, only relationship it did, the victim had an apartment above Margaritaville, and I guess two guys were trying to get in, and he went down and was involved in it. He's the guy that got stabbed, and it was down at his apartment. So, and I bring that to your attention because the person that brought that to me said it as though that's what he had heard, and it was someone influential here in the city. So, I thought I'd tell the council members, because I want you to know what's going on in the Esplanade if I can, taste of my bar. I want to say, there've been no police-reported incidents since last summer that I'm aware of. And by that, I mean, I don't mean any entire Esplanade, but at Bay Bar. We've kind of got a reputation. We're part of the colorful part of, of Capitola that you referred to, I think. And so, we, I don't think there've been any reported police incidents. There may have been, but nothing of any significance, I think. There were last summer. Last summer, there were a couple fights and things like that. We work very hard to keep a good relationship with the city administrators and the police department. Mr. Rudy Espinoza's been a great chief for us so far. And Detective Sarah, and I don't know her last name, she's got married, who's the detective, who's assigned as a liaison, has done an excellent job. She's on top of things. She communicates well. And recently, we met with her just yesterday about gang activity in Capitola. There's, there is no, well, I can't say there is no, in our bar, there is no gang activity. We had a meeting several weeks ago about a group that had come in there that were identified as gang members. My pledge to her was that anyone in my bar that served a known gang member would no longer work there. I'd fire them and take the person out. And so, I, because the red light went on, I'm out of time, but I thought I'd let you know, because we're trying to do our part. I explained to her, I can't ask somebody if they come in in a suit, if they're a member of a gang before I serve them. If they come in and they have gang clothing on, or the stuff that gang members wear, and we recognize it, and she told me a couple of gangs I'd never even heard of, then we can refuse service to them. Tell them, "Look, I don't want you in here," which we will do. However, I thought I'd let you know about gangs from a business owner's perspective. I just have one more thing, if you don't mind me incident. There were, recently, there was a lewd sign printed down in the Esplanade that I called the police department and reported. I don't even know if it's a crime to put up a sign, but it says, "Don't touch the effing bike." And it was reported to me by a customer who was walking with his eight-year-old daughter, and she read the sign and said, "What does that mean, Daddy?" And I don't know why he reported it to me. I must look like a guy. It's easy to report to. So, I called the police dispatcher. I then followed up by telling Sarah about the incident. She was going to follow up to see if there'd been any, and it was, the dispatcher said they would dispatch somebody over to take a look at it. I don't know what happened, but anyway.
Thanks for coming down here tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thanks a lot.
It's really nice to have a local merchant coming here and introducing themselves to us. Doesn't happen very often. Maybe we should have, invite a merchant night, every, every Thursday night, invite one merchant to come.
Merchant night. That's good. Okay, good.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Then we will have the report on the closed session, please.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Prior to adjourning to closed session, the council made the findings to add. Prior to adjourning to closed session, the council made the findings to add two letters to its agenda that were received late this afternoon on Item 9B, threatening litigation over the proposed firearms ordinance. So that was added to the end of the council's closed session agenda. Council had a conference with its labor negotiator and provided direction, but took no reportable action. The council received an update on the City of Capitola versus Lexington Insurance Company, but took no reportable action. The council did not discuss the real property under negotiation, or the potential litigation against the County of Santa Cruz regarding the Noble Gulch pipe failure. The council did discuss the property tax administrative fee dispute, but took no reportable action, and again, discussed the two letters that were received late this afternoon, but took no reportable action on those letters.
Thank you very much. Next item is council and staff announcements. Are there any staff announcements? There are any, counsel, Mike?
There's, this Tuesday, March 5th, the Shadowbrook is having a fundraising dinner for the American Red Cross. If you go there, they will donate a third of all the proceeds. Just let them know you're there for the Red Cross. And also, we received notification that one of our citizens is receiving the Violet Richardson Award for Prevention of Violence Against Women, and the only thing, and we've been invited to the award ceremony. The only thing the letter does not tell us is where exactly the award ceremony may be. So if the city manager finds out for us, I'm sure representatives from the council will attend. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ed, do you have any?
I do not.
Ed and Michael and I attended the Santa Cruz Business Council Annual Meeting last night. We did not talk to each other about any city business, but we enjoyed it, and it was very interesting. The Monterey Bay Division of our professional organization, the League of California Cities, is having a meeting on Monday, March 11th, at the Seascape Resort. I have to work that night, but I would encourage council members to go. It's a good opportunity to meet council members from other cities, and a lot of times, they have been dealing with the same issues we have, and/or can give us some good ideas about how to solve some issues that we may be working on, and it's a great place to network and get copies of their ordinances, so we don't have to write ours from scratch, and it's usually very interesting.
Madam Mayor, I would note that if any of you would like to attend the luncheon, please let me know. I'd be happy to make arrangements for both of us to attend. And I did get an outreach from the league representative, asking specifically if Capitola was going to be able to attend, since it was relatively close.
And I'm going to follow up with the sanitation district and the backups that we've had on Capitola Avenue, just down the street, and several businesses, sewage backups in there, and see what's going on with that. Steve, do you have any information about that?
I don't. I will make a similar call and get more information.
Sam, do you have any announcements?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay. Chief?
I apologize, Madam Mayor, council. Just one announcement. On Thursday, the services for the Tucson officers, which will take place at the Warriors Stadium Facility down in Santa Cruz. I mention this primarily because of the procession of patrol vehicles will be coming from the fairgrounds to Santa Cruz, and Highway One will be completely closed, starting around 8:00 AM, 8:30 till about 11:00. And so people are going to have to find some alternate routes. We estimate that the procession of patrol cars will be about seven miles long, and people who would like to view that, there will be safe places on overpasses along the way, but that will be a significant impact to every community member in the county, and so I just want to make sure our residents are aware of that.
I hope the newspaper will, I hope the newspaper will provide information about that, so that commuters and students going to UCSC and so forth will know that they're going to have to leave early. What time is the service?
It starts at 11:00 AM. There will be several dignitaries as well. The hope is to try and have this televised live, so people can actually view that either from their iPad through YouTube, where the Warriors have graciously offered their facility, and it will be televised live. There is an alternate site as well, an overflow site, which will be at the Civic Auditorium, but there are going to be significant traffic impacts.
Rudy, what time is the procession coming down Highway One?
We hope to start to leave the fairgrounds around 8:30, 9 o'clock. We are finalizing some of those details, starting tomorrow. It will take us about an hour to get from Watsonville down through Santa Cruz.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, then, we're going to go on to the consent calendar, which is a group of relatively minor items, housekeeping items, that is handled with one motion. Would anyone like, the audience like to pull an item for separate discussion? Or would any council member like to pull anything for separate discussion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, may I pull Item 8C regarding the City Hall trees? There's some additional information I need to give to the council.
Sure.
Thank you. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Item 8C?
Yes, I just want, in the staff report, it talks about replanting some trees at Haight Street Park. I kind of jumped the gun there, and need to negotiate that with the school district at this point. We are meeting next week to review the site that we're going to plant some trees there. It's their determination. If they don't want the trees planted there, we will find another site at another park to plant them. So I just wanted to be clear on that, that it is, I'm talking to the school district, and they just want to review where we're going to plant them.
Great, okay.
Steve, are we moving the, are we moving the flagpole in this plan?
That, right now, we're not, we're just removing and replacing trees along the Capitola front.
You know, there is a time capsule underneath that.
Yeah, it's actually over by the community room door. No, the plans there are, you know, show what Mike Arnon came up with for a new courtyard there. That's unfunded at this point. Right now, we're just moving forward with the removal and replacement of the trees.
Thank you.
We should put that time capsule on our working list to do something with it. We had a, got a letter years ago from a fellow that was a student at New Brighton Middle School, that his class put it together, and, but he doesn't live around here anymore, I don't think, but...
I'll bring it up to him on my meeting next week with him.
Yeah, I think we should put on our agenda finding it first.
Well, we know where it is.
Did we find, did we locate, okay.
I haven't dug it up, but I'm pretty sure I've been told where it is.
Yeah, Ed Morrison knows where it is. But it'd be nice to have, it'd be nice to invite that, if we could ever get the information, the students in that class, invite them back now, and, you know, to participate, but that would be quite an effort to try, try to find, find that class, I guess. I think it was done in the 70s.
I think it was done as the bicentennial, is my information I was told.
Yeah. Okay. Then we'll go on to, oh, did we vote on that motion, on the?
No.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 9A, an update on Lower Pacific Cove Parking Lot Project.
So as council's aware, since the last several months, we've been working on closing the Mobile Home Park, removing all the coaches, and, under council direction, developing plans and a project to put a temporary parking lot in there. Tonight, as originally scheduled, for you guys to consider a negative declaration. That action has actually been delayed, is going to go to the Planning Commission first. And so tonight, we are before you, just to review the plans as they are today, give you a status update. Because it was advertised in the notice for the negative declaration, there may be some people in the audience who wish to comment on it, so we ask that you take those comments tonight, and they will be relayed to the Planning Commission, and then we'll be coming back to the council. So here's the plans as we currently are, pretty much, we're at 50%. Let's do some orientation. This is Bay Avenue up here, Monterey Avenue coming down here, Cap Ave coming up here, this is City Hall right here. So as you can see, we have parking along the entire area. It's about 230 spaces, remarkably about the same size as the parking lot, the existing parking lot here. It is a single aisle lot for most of the area. We do have some places where we're able to get two bays in. It's harder to see on this plan, but there's a turnaround here that meets fire requirements, so the fire trucks can come in and turn around and go back out. And then we did add a smaller turnaround at this end, does not meet the fire requirements, so that the car should, will be able to turn around. If they're not able to find a spot, they can go turn around and drive back, and go back and forth. The restrooms are remaining and will be remodeled. The, what was the former, former site of what was known as the Beulah House, we are taking one of the nicer coaches that was, we purchased in the park, and putting it here for parking enforcement, hopefully to get the community room back as a community room. And let's see, the pavement, we are just going to pave the drive aisles here, essentially the road that is there today, little variations in it. The rest of the parking stalls are going to be pervious rock for drainage purposes. This keeps the runoff at a level that is less than we have there today, and the, we're going to put some storage areas underground, I mean, there are just deep pockets of rock here to store rainwater. It's all part of the new stormwater requirements from the State of California that we're required to implement on this project. Those are really the features, there is a pedestrian path that's included. It runs from the far end here, goes through, goes behind the parking stalls here, in front of the bathrooms, and it crosses the parking lot here and exits up to Bay Avenue. We're actually looking kind of at this end to see if we can get it across sooner than going up here, but for right now, we will have a decomposed granite pedestrian pathway from Capitola Avenue to Bay Avenue. So just to give us a quick project update, the final size, looks like it's going to be between 225 and 235 parking spaces. We make a little tweak here, we lose a space, another tweak, we add a space, so that's why there's a range there. It's all being done within the existing footprint of the former Mobile Home Park, and by that means we're not expanding any of the retaining walls, or pushing out anywhere, we're staying within the footprint that was there. It maximizes the use of pervious pavements. We're doing this with minimal tree removal. There's several horticultural trees or ornamental trees in the park that will be removed, but we do have a planting plan, and we'll be replacing all trees six inches or greater with two trees, so we will be meeting our ordinances. Like I said, plans are about halfway done right now, we're just waiting to get through the environmental review. We're currently conducting some value engineering to contain the costs. The first estimate came in a little high, so we're just looking at things, making sure we're realizing this is being designed as a temporary lot with a five-year life, and going through that. And on the funding side, the city has received preliminary approval from, of I Bank financing for the project. So what's next is the Planning Commission will consider an environmental documents and coastal permits at their next meeting on March 7th. Now, this is a change from the, what the staff report says. Those documents and permits do not need to be approved by the city council, only if they are appealed. So at this point, we're not planning to bring them back unless they are appealed, and so their actions will be final pending appeal. Staff will return on the council on March 28th for review of the costs of the project and a tentative approval of a financing plan. And just so you get the feeling this isn't, you know, you don't, you're going to have a lot of chances to comment and review this project. The plan will be coming to you if a appeal is filed on the permits, when the final project plans are submitted for approval and authorization to go to bid, and for final approval of the financing packages. Some of those may be lumped together, or those could be three different times you'll see this project come before you. So tonight's action is only to take public testimony regarding the proposed negative declaration, and that's the end of my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Michael?
Steve, first of all, thank you that increasing the use of the decomposed granite in the parking spaces, fabulous. It's kind of what we were looking for, and I assume you're going to put the parking space numbers on the paving in front of the parking spaces?
Yes, they'll be on the asphalt, just facing into the parking.
Perfect. We've probably cut our, our ground covers down probably in half by doing that.
Yeah, probably more than that, yes.
How will we be noticing the Planning Commission? Will it just be the usual radius? I think we need to do a little more publication of the Planning Commission's deliberation on this than just the postcards.
I'm going to look for help on that one. I know this meeting, we noticed the 300-foot radius around the property, and we'll see what the...
It seems to have, it seems to have a little more general far-reaching effects. I'm not suggesting that everyone in the city get a postcard, but I think we could do a little bit just to promote the meeting and get some more public input.
Right, we do put a notice in the paper, we did put a notice in the paper regarding the meeting, and then we did the postcards for all of the property owners that are within 300 feet.
Great, and we could probably put it on the scroll, too.
Yeah.
For the 12 people who look at that, you know. Good.
Mike, can I follow up with what you just said? A 300-foot radius, I'll give you an example. The people across the street from us got to notice we did not get a notice.
Yeah, we're just outside.
That's what the line is.
Yeah.
I know. Well, I think the radius should be bigger in a project like this. I think it should be 500 feet. You know, it seems to me that, you know, we're limiting public response if we're, if the, if the Planning Commission is going to approve the coastal permit, the negative deck, and the use permit, I think this is a complete community involvement in this thing, not 300-foot radius.
Now, I mentioned it not, not just to 500 feet, I just felt that more publicity just in general, because it's not just that extra 200 feet, it's a whole city, community involvement, sort of a thing.
Right, we have sent out the notices for the 300-foot radius. We certainly could look at the first part of next week, sending out notices, you know, for an additional 200 feet. Those notices would be going out the first part of next week, so they wouldn't meet any kind of legal requirement for noticing, but, you know, could get the information out a little further. I actually think, you know, if we want to put it up on the scroll and in the newspaper, it seems like that's one way where, you know, an awful lot of people get their information.
Susan, while you're up there, can I ask her a question? It's okay.
Sure.
Is this, is this a mitigated negative deck, or just a negative debt?
This is just a negative declaration, and it has been circulated for the 30 days that it was supposed to be circulated, went to all the various agencies. We've actually only received two comments on it. One was from County Sanitation, I mean, County Zone 5, and the other one was from the Army Corps of Engineers. We haven't received any comments from the public.
Because the staff report's called it a mitigated negative deck, but it's not really mitigated, there's no mitigation.
It's not a mitigated, it's just strictly a negative declaration. We did not find, going through the initial study, that there was going to be any negative impacts as a result of this project when you, this is a SEQA document, and so it's based on what is in the SEQA guidelines.
I was just questioning the terminology used here. It says mitigated, it's not mitigated.
Right, I'm going to have to educate Steve a little more on these SEQA processes, particularly if I'm not going to be here.
Maybe plan, see, plan a mitigated somehow.
That's right.
So if I understand the process correctly, what will happen here is, we'll have discussion of this tonight. There'll be no motion by the council, we'll allow public discussion. It'll go to the Planning Commission, and at the Planning Commission level, they will be approving the coastal permit, the negative deck, and the use permit, okay, at a public hearing.
Correct.
And then, and then it never, it doesn't come, the project doesn't come back to us. This is the only time we're going to see this.
No, that's not exactly correct.
Okay, okay.
Tonight, all you're doing is commenting on the negative declaration. We had advertised when we put out the negative declaration and did our 30-day noticing that anyone who wanted to comment on the negative declaration would have the opportunity to comment on that tonight, so we're honoring that. As far as the project permits are concerned, the coastal, certifying the negdeck, the coastal permit, and the use permit, and the architectural and site review permit, those are Planning Commission permits. They issue those permits all of the time, and so their action would be final on those permits. The project still comes back to you because you all have to authorize this project, you have to authorize the financing plan, because it can't be built without that, and so you will see the documents when the project is ready to go out to bid, is my understanding, and somebody can correct me if I say something incorrectly. So it would seem to me that while the Planning Commission will issue those permits, you know, the final authorization to do this project, you know, the final tweaking of it, you will do as part of deciding whether or not you want to put this project out to bid.
Okay, so, so in trying, trying to try this whole project together, as come to conclusion here, I'm having a little problem letting the Planning Commission be the only body to judge this thing, since they won't even have financial information. In other words, if it's coming back to us after that...
But the planning could just, just as...
I know it doesn't, but it's... I know, I know it doesn't, but it's also, this, that should have been here tonight if we were going to discuss that, because the main bearing of whether this project happens tonight or not, doesn't happen tonight, is whether it's financially feasible.
No, I, I don't, I shouldn't just say no, but I'll, I'll, I'll repeat myself one more time. The only thing that you're doing tonight is giving people an opportunity to comment on the negative declaration. Tonight's meeting was not scheduled to be a discussion of the parking lot or the project itself. It was to give anyone from the public the opportunity to comment, and we will take those comments on to the planning commission. The planning commission will hear this application, just like they hear applications from any other developer, and their decisions are not based on financing or whether the project is financially feasible.
They are based on that decision, they wouldn't come to you unless they had that decision.
No.
We're acting as the, we're acting as a developer itself.
Do we, do we not have, it looks, it comes back for financial.
It's going to come back to you. You are the ones who are going to make the financial decisions. You are the ones who are going to make the decisions on whether or not this project goes out to bid and what the project is that goes out to bid. That's your role as the city council. You know, the planning commission's role is to issue certain permits and follow, you know, the guidelines that we have on our zoning ordinance for issuing those permits. Even if they, if they issue those permits and you want to change something, you will certainly have the opportunity to do that.
Well, we'll just have to appeal it, then, as a way we have to change it.
You absolutely can appeal it, and if you appeal it, then, just like with any other planning commission decision, then it will come to you, but the way the zoning regulations are written without an appeal, the planning commission's decision stands.
We've already made two decisions to make, to move this thing forward in this project here. We have not addressed any of the financial issues of that yet. I think that's a major choice in making, letting this project go forward, or where it goes today. And we should, we should be making that before it goes to the planning commission.
Right, but the, this project has come before the council. You had, you voted to, you know, approve the project in concept, and just like with, you know, any other development project, whether it's a city project or whether it's a private developer, the next step is to go through the environmental review, go to the planning commission, and have them issue the permits that are needed for the project. Just like with any other development, as you say, you're the developer, the decisions about whether or not you go forward with this project and the financial decisions are going to be your decisions that you are going to make. You're going to analyze the cost of the project when it goes out to bid, and the Public Works Director gives you all the information on what the various costs are going to be. So, you know, the decision by the planning commission doesn't mean that the decision has been made for the city council.
Okay, my only point is, and Stephanie and I both voiced our concern about what this project was going to cost, and I was under the impression that we would see that before we, this project moved forward. I mean, if it's costing beyond our, what we initially saw in the costing, I think the project should stop now until we find out, because if that's the case, the project should be downsized. We should have discussed, we should have this discussion at council level and have discussion whether this project's financially feasible, and we want to go forward with it before we, before we send to the planning commission and get the wrong project approved.
Yeah, I, I understand, it's always difficult in communities when you're talking about a community project. You know, it's much simpler if you have a developer coming in to do that. I guess I just wanted to reiterate that having this project go to the planning commission in no way preempts any opportunity that you or the council members have to make changes to it, decide to do it, to not do it, to, you know, modify the cost. It's just that we now have to get coastal permits for any public works project that's over $25,000. So this little awkward step, I think you're going to see happening with other, you know, public works, capital projects that the city wants to do.
Thank you, Susan.
Are there any other questions for Steve Jesburg at this time? Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. On the design, Steve, I just had a couple of questions, and one of them was concerning the traffic flow. Is there a space there being designed in for a shuttle, a pickup, drop-off location?
Yeah, they're hard to see on here, but we are designing in the process of, in the final documents, a shuttle stop down here, a shuttle stop by the public restrooms, and we're thinking we'll open with those two, but there is room for a third shuttle stop up at the upper end.
So, and that will still allow passage of?
Yes, it will.
The vehicles to go through there? Okay, yeah, Dennis?
Yeah, I'm going to expand on that, in that you're thinking you're going to run a shuttle through this thing? How are you going to, you couldn't run a shuttle through the other, upper parking lot, ever. When it's that busy, you could never get, you'd get in one end, and you'd never get out the other end. If you want a shuttle stop, it should be at both ends, as you pick up from. Soon as you put that shuttle bus in that, into that loop there, you're, that thing's going to be a dead, dead stop.
I think maybe we've prompted a point that the planning commission may want to look into.
We can look at that, yes.
Yeah, and I have a feeling this is going to be coming to the council, no matter what the planning commission may decide. One other, just, you know, at this juncture, a question about the pedestrian pathways, those are all designed to be ADA compliant?
The ADA access, well, actually, all the sites will be able to access the village through ADA pathways. The pathway up to Bay Avenue does not meet ADA current standards right now, but the parking spaces will have access to a pathway which will allow them to get to the village.
Okay, thank you.
Would you lock the bathroom at night?
Yes, like we do in our other public restrooms, the police department would go around in the evening and lock, lock the bathrooms.
Okay. Any question, Ed?
Just a couple of questions. In the plan, I didn't notice it on there, but is there any provision for RV parking in or any larger-than-normal spaces?
There's no oversized parking areas included in this. These spaces are all to design standards, which are bigger than the ones we have behind us right now, but there's no oversized spaces included.
Would it be possible to add a few of those, or is that not?
At the cost of other ones, it would be difficult.
Up on the second deck, I mean, it seems like we have much more likely place to change double, two spaces into a single RV entry, no, in the, the body of the, to the left, to the left, see the, upstairs, upstairs, come upstairs.
Upstairs, where are you going?
Upstairs, Pacific Cove parking lot.
He's on Upper Pacific Cove.
I'm sorry.
You know, it seems like those are aligned in such a way.
Oh, right here, yeah.
Yeah.
That's something we could look at. I don't, you know, we, we get, you know, working here daily basis, we don't get a whole lot of RVs or large vehicles in there, they certainly gun it up.
I wouldn't advocate for more than five, but it would be nice to have a couple.
Something we could look at.
That's all. And, and the other, we do get buses, you know, it doesn't have to be a lot, but just something to think about. And the other question is, is there any plan to have a stairway to connect upper and lower to the bathroom?
We don't at this time. If we did provide access from the upper lot to the bathrooms down there, I'm certain it would have to be ADA compliant, too, so it'd be more than a stairway, it'd be a stairway and a ramp, and given those elevation changes, that would be, that'd be an expensive project.
Would it be possible to look into that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Or an elevator, it'd have to be an elevator. Yeah. Any other questions of Steve at this time? This is a public hearing, would anyone like to talk to us about this project? Give us your thoughts about it. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nels Westman. It's one of my favorite topics, so I'm sure you're not surprised I'm up here. The reality of 230 new public parking spaces in Pacific Cove is, I think, probably the most significant accomplishment that the city has achieved in 20 years. And the thing that makes it even more special is how many people will benefit from the additional parking. The residents of Capitola Village will benefit as the pressure on the existing spaces is lessened, greatly improving their chances of parking someplace remotely close to their homes. Residents in the adjacent neighborhoods of the village will benefit from a dramatic reduction in overflow parking in the neighborhoods from village visitors and employees. Visitors will benefit from more availability of affordable parking, particularly during the high-demand season, and the convenience of this parking will be increased by an efficient, frequent shuttle bus service. Congestion in the village will be reduced by a new signage program that will get them, get their cars directly into Pacific Cove lots without repeatedly circling, looking for a parking space. And finally, the business community will benefit from more and hopefully happier customers. A more prosperous business community means a more prosperous village and city. The temporary lot that is proceeding steadily through the design and approval process is a critical test of all of the good things that could happen for our community as a result of the development of 230 new public parking spaces. There is no doubt in my mind that it will be a resounding success and will underline the necessity of a permanent parking solution in the form of a parking structure. The icing on the cake is that this can happen soon, very soon. With your continued support and commitment, the temporary parking lot will be in service sometime this summer. The test can begin, and we can move forward with designing and implementing a comprehensive parking, traffic, and circulation program for Capitola Village. I thank you for your support of the temporary lot so far, and I would urge you to stay the course on making the temporary lot a reality this summer. That would truly be a significant accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Who would like to start first?
I think we're just receiving the report, and I think it's a great job, and I think you need to continue on with the value engineering, because the financial aspect of this is very pivotal to us, and I think when you come back to us, we need to really delineate, the public wants to know which of the items we're expending money on will remain after this parking lot is abandoned and used another way. So I, I know myself that the pay stations can be relocated, the bathrooms are always a bonus, you know, and useful, so it'd be nice to, to get a feel for that when it does come back to us for financing.
Any other comments? I'd just like to make sure it's as attractive as possible, that, that the landscaping is really attractive, really nice-looking. I think that's always important. Sam?
No.
Dennis?
Yes, I actually have a lot to say, but since we're only dealing with a negative deck right now, but I will assure you that this will come back to the council, it will come back. So I'll have my chance to address it then. If you go to page number two, description of projects in environmental settings, and second paragraph from the bottom, I'm not sure if it's page two to you, it's, it's item two, two B, second paragraph, it says, "The city is now proposing to construct a surface parking lot on the project, on the project site," referring to a specific Lower Pacific Cove parking lot, "to serve a temporary parking lot until the permanent parking, parking structure is constructed. At this time, it is expected that proposed parking lot will be used for a period of up to five years or until such a time that, that a planned parking structure is construction and operational. Currently, there is no schedule for funding for development of the parking garage." So how can we call this thing temporary when we have no plans or no, no concept of moving forward towards, towards an upper parking lot? And I assure you, and this community right here, that, that the day you build this thing here, you'll never, ever see that upper parking garage, because all momentum will be taken off of it, plus you've used a significant amount of the funds that you would use for it. But the way, the way this is described is, is that, that we tell ourselves it's a temporary parking lot, but at the same time, we're saying that, in the next sentence, we're stating that currently there is no schedule or funding for development of a parking garage. If you truly believe that there's going to be an Upper Pacific Cove, we should be starting that process right now, and we're not. There's no plan for it. And, and so, you know, I, there's, there's nothing really to discuss on the negative deck, because it's a negative deck, it isn't mitigated, and you're changing a parking lot into a parking lot. And that, that is, that comes down to my biggest problem with this thing, is, is that, my God, we've got enough parking lots in this city, three-quarters of our city's covered with parking lots and places for the automobile. That property there should be a park for this community, and that's all it should be. And, and I'm telling you that, that, that if you took this to the vote of this community today, I would assure you, if they had a choice between a parking lot and a park, that a park would overwhelmingly win the support of this community. So think, think about what is the best use for our community when we do this, and we're stepping forward with this. And I'm sorry, it's not a parking lot. It may benefit the businesses down there, which I'm in favor of, but the real solution is, is the Upper Pacific Cove, which I feel that you're going to take the momentum off of by doing this, and so I'll get my chance when it comes back to the council. That's where I stand.
I think it's the first, it's the first step. It's the first step. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
There is no motion, there's no.
Okay, just accept, accept it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go on to nine B, consideration of an urgency ordinance revising and supplementing current, oh, I forgot, item seven A. I'd like to continue that item to the next meeting. Thank you very much, sorry. Urgency ordinance revising and supplementing current Capitola Municipal Code, Chapter 5.32 Firearms and Ammunition Regulations and adopting regulations pertaining to the possession of firearms on city property and public property in the vicinity of schools. And the first thing we need to do is to have a vote on the urgency ordinance, or we'll take that at the end, after discussion, okay? Okay, Chief?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow council members, Rudy Escalante, Chief of Police. I'm going to try and give you just a synopsis of kind of what has occurred that we've brought forward in the last almost two months, and cover some local events that have occurred, and then try and give you a breakdown of some of the California law that is currently on the books, some of the things that are going to be taking place over the year, and also come forward with some options that we presented at our last meeting on February 14th, and then give you a design of what we have here. Okay, at our February 14th hearing, we did present some options to you to regulate the firearms and ammunition sales specifically in the city of Capitola. That's your direction. We brought this urgency ordinance to you, and I've worked with the city attorney's office to bring that to you. The next phase would be on March 14th, there would be a hearing, and I'd be able to give you some information on things we've looked into as far as gun buyback programs and give-back programs. I'll also give you some more opportunity to look at the support that has been going on for state background laws for ammunition. I will tell you that I am the representative through the California Police Chiefs Association statewide on the Law and Legislative Committee. We just had our state conference this, earlier this week, and during that time, I was assigned as a representative to follow 35 bills that are being presented to the legislature in regarding to ammunition and gun regulations. There are numerous regulations that are being proposed, so I will continually report to you on the status of those bills and where they lie, and, and it's just an enormous amount that are going on. Just to give you a little bit more background, in regards to our retail public distribution shops in the city of Capitola, we have two of them, Outdoor World and Big Five, they are both on 41st Avenue. There are numerous state regulations regarding the sale and transfer of firearms in the state of California. We are recognized as having the most stringent laws in the country, they are very, very complicated. I will say that our two retail stores do an exceptional job, I have met with both managers and inspected the businesses, and the processes that they use, they follow state law, and oftentimes they exceed it, in the training of their staff, the recognition of straw purchases, and that's when somebody comes in to try and buy a firearm for somebody who is, should not have one. The district attorney's office in Santa Cruz County is also working very closely with the adult prohibited persons list, and so every agency in the county, and I've met with the county chiefs, has taken steps to try and address the firearms and ammunition issues that, under the current laws that we do have. I will say, in regards to restrictions in school zones, there is nothing, the prohibition does not apply to possession of a firearm on private property if that firearm is unloaded within a locked container or possessed by a law enforcement officer in their official capacity. There are current state laws that regulate the possession of a firearm in a negligent manner inside a home. There are laws when the sale or transfer of the firearm takes place. There are laws when the sale or transfer of the firearm takes place in regards to the safety and the, whether it's a trigger guard or some sort of cable, at least Outdoor World, they provide all of those devices. We actually have them, people can pick them up free of charge. Outdoor World actually, when they're required to make that sale, if a person asks for an extra one, they will give that to them. And as Big Five, they do not sell handguns, so there's only one location for public retail that occurs, and that is at Outdoor World. And as I've emphasized, they oftentimes exceed the sale of what needs to take place. So some of the recent events, you know, just locally that have generated some additional fear and the random usage of handguns, between January 18th and February 18th of this year, we've experienced countywide three-gun-related homicides, two armed-gun robberies, two assaults with serious injuries, including the robbery of a young woman who received a non-fatal gunshot wound, and at least 15 other incidents involving the use of firearms. We've also investigated a recent incident, and I really can't go too far into it, where a person was injured with a firearm and the possessor of that legally should not have been in possession of a firearm, but did purchase ammunition legally. There is no check right now of somebody who can go in and purchase ammunition, and that's not something of a retailer's fault. Currently, they're abiding by state law. They're not doing anything wrong that way. There are several bills that are, as I mentioned, that are going through. One of them is Senate Bill 53, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. So by making some of the changes, currently, our ordinance indicates that the Chief of Police has the authority to oversee these purchases, or at least the approval of a business license. So one of the changes the urgency ordinance would address is that it would require the city council to make that approval. The chief's office would then also conduct the background investigation of the applicant. So that would then come in front of you before a final decision would be made, and of course, any other conditions or regulations could be added at that point. But my responsibility would to make sure the background was completed, that all the state law requirements are being followed, which is something that we do now. So all we would be doing would be shifting that responsibility and giving you an opportunity. Currently, there are requirements for that firearms be locked. We're not restricting anybody from purchasing, we're not increasing the law, we're not doing any of that. What we're doing is we're trying to make some zoning regulations to our current zoning ordinance and to our municipal code. It would ban possession of firearms on city property, which there are state laws that are consistent with that as well. Somebody who possessed a loaded concealable firearm that was not licensed and not permitted, state law prohibits that. And so the ban on possession of public property is also a current state law. Possession of firearms on public property within 1,000 feet of a school, that is current state and federal law as well. So that is not something that is over and above the law. These are all within current state laws as well. The map here, I put in the 2,000 feet as a placeholder. The map that I show you there shows our two licensed retail stores. The green marking is Big Five, and the red or purple marking is that of Outdoor World. So you can see the radius of 2,000 feet, how far it would affect that within that commercial district. And to give you another look, this is a 1,000-foot radius as to what that would look. So you would have the option for 2,000 or 1,000 feet. That is, like I said, that 2,000 feet is just a placeholder. So at our next hearing on the 14th, we would also look at an additional option. One thing that council had given me direction to is to explore current ordinances that are in existence within other city jurisdictions in the state. I've spoken to the city of Sacramento and the city of Los Angeles, they both have ordinances that, because of staffing levels, they can't monitor, but where you have to report sales of ammunition to the local police department. One thing that San Francisco is exploring and moving forward with is to have an ordinance requiring purchase information for any sale over 500 rounds of ammunition. Prior to bringing this to council, I did meet with both managers for Big Five and Outdoor World, and in their opinion, this would not negatively affect them. The purchases are very small. Most of the time, you'll see a box of ammunition of about 50 rounds. And if you, when you look at the ordinance, I put in there that it's handgun and rifle ammunition. And the purposes of that is for shotgun ammunition, or somebody who's skeet-shooting, they carry it in bigger, they might carry it in bigger amounts. And so it wouldn't limit anybody from making any purchase. All it would be is if somebody was making a purchase of more than 500 rounds. Senate Bill 53, just so you know, and if you wanted to, you would also submit a letter of support. Some of the points in that Senate bill behind Senator DeLeon is that they're asking for people to get a permit to purchase ammunition, similar to that of purchasing a handgun, a 10-day waiting period, being able to eliminate those internet purchases. Currently, if somebody wanted to buy a firearm, and again, you are not limiting the sale of any firearm to anyone who can legally purchase it. If I wanted to buy ammunition from, or a firearm from out of state, because it would be going to a California address, the seller of that firearm would have to transfer that to a FFL license, a federal firearms license person in California. They would hold on to that for 10 days, and then, once it was cleared, then the sale would take place. The same thing is being suggested in this bill for ammunition. Again, not limiting, but being able to background people to make sure that they are legally able to purchase ammunition. Hence, the example I gave earlier of a case that was investigated where a convicted felon was able to purchase ammunition and we had a discharge of a firearm that day. So that's kind of the information about kind of what's happening and where we are and what we're proposing regarding gun buyback programs. It varies from amounts depending on how much a person gets in. As I mentioned at our meeting on the 14th, we did have a meeting with our faith-based groups. They are exploring the possibility of a give-back program that would occur at churches. We would help them with security and bringing any firearms in that people would want to just get rid of, something that they would not want in their home. And so we are continuing to dialogue with them and hopefully have something in place. And I think that's about it. So at this point, I'm ready to take any questions, and I hope I covered everything to you. You can see the additions in the urgency ordinance that was developed, again, with the assistance of the city attorney. And it talks about the certain amendments, which basically gives you, the council, the opportunity for a business to come to you first and make any conditions that you would want.
Michael?
Thank you, Chief. Did I hear you mention that there is a state law already for safe and secure firearms within the home?
If a person negligently possesses a firearm in a home, and they know that there are kids in the residence, and then they have access to that, and it is used in a negative way, then the parents can be prosecuted for that.
Are we in conflict, city attorney, with regard to preempting state law by changing in any way the safe and secure storage of firearms in the home?
No, I don't believe so. What Chief Escalante is referring to, it has to do with the prosecution of the parents if certain things happen in the home, and this relates to just how firearms should be stored and when you don't have them on your person.
Great. Secondly, we have a lot of language with regard to ammunition in this emergency ordinance, and I believe that the state is pretty much, and federal government pretty much takes control with regard to the regulation of ammunition. It seems like we're dancing down a line on that one as well?
I'm going to actually defer to the chief on this. I'm not familiar with the federal and state laws surrounding ammunition.
That was one of the things that was listed when John reported to us last week, or two weeks ago, with regard to what we could and could not preempt, and I think ammunition, the distribution and sale of ammunition was one of those things, pretty specifically, Chief.
I could read you the four sections about preemption. It states, state law expressly preempts the following: the regulation of the registration or licensing of firearms; manufacture, sale, or possession of imitation firearms; restriction on handgun possession in an individual's home, business, or private property; and certain ammunition sales, state law prohibits city and prohibiting sale of handgun ammunition. Basically, you're saying we would prohibit the sale of handgun ammunition?
Okay.
And we're not doing that.
Got that. And if I understand correctly, because someone came to speak to us at our last meeting when we discussed this, had some really salient points with regard to the database interlacing when someone is convicted of a felony, being relieved of their firearm's license.
That's correct.
That is now a process. We may not have the information very fluid, but that is the process now, is it not?
That's correct, and our DA's office, district attorney's office, actually follows up on that. And if somebody gets a denial letter, meaning the process has been activated where somebody wants to purchase a firearm, the state does a background check and finds out that they are prohibited, we get a denial letter, we being the police department, the area jurisdiction.
But what if someone has a firearm permit already and then commits a felony?
What will happen is, we are supposed to get notified that this person is now on the prohibited persons list, and at that point, we work with the district attorney's office in taking the correct legal steps, whether it's a search warrant, or how do we obtain that firearm and recover that.
And, you know, forgive me for delving into this, and it may or may not be something you can speak to, and forgive me not using euphemisms because I hate them, the person who murdered two police officers. Were they not, I know that he was convicted of misdemeanors, but was not the gun charge that was against him a felony, or was it just a misdemeanor gun infraction?
He was acquitted of any charges, so therefore, he was not part of the list.
Thank you.
Sam?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. You know, it seems like we are discussing this at a very poignant time. So I guess I wanted to ask about the definition of firearms dealers, which includes dealers of ammunition. And I wanted to be sure, I know we've identified two firearms dealers in the community, but may there be other vendors that may sell just ammunition? And by us limiting to two, would we find ourselves in a position of maybe having to either pull back or restrict or close down the current sale of ammunition?
A lot of it, thank you, that's a very good question. A lot of it depends on the location because we are trying to limit it to one certain area. So if that person was out of the area of that designated zone, it would still come to you.
It would?
Yes.
Okay. So just to be clear about the limitation of only two dealers would only be in a certain area and not impact other ammunition dealers?
I believe so, and that's how we've written that. Correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Councilmember Story, my understanding of the ordinance as it's crafted today basically limits the total number of dealers in the city to two, under the ordinance.
Yeah, that was my reading of it.
Right.
And so I just wanted to be sure that we had some confidence that the numbers of dealers of both firearms and ammunition currently does not exceed the limitation that we're placing.
You're correct, and that was my error, I apologize for that. I was referring to another section if it was outside the commercial, community commercial district. Thank you, city manager, for correcting me on that.
Also, I had a question about the 1,000-feet restriction on, how would we alert members of the public as to where that prohibitive zone begins? And so that, and what would you do if somebody unintentionally may have crossed the line?
Well, they would have to come to me to start the process as far as with their federal firearms license, with their state license request, and the business license. So that background process would come through me, so I would vet that before it would come here.
It also, in the ordinance refers to someone who's guilty of that as of it being just a misdemeanor. Is it, are we restricted of keeping it just a misdemeanor? Are we preempted in that respect?
I'm going to have to refer to the city attorney for that question.
Councilmember Story, I believe that this would be a misdemeanor under the current, the way that the penal codes are currently written. I don't believe that the council could elevate the level of this.
And finally, under the actual language of the ordinance, Section 5.32.160, again referring to the numbers of retail firearm dealers permitted, it uses the word retail, and I just, does that allow the possibility of wholesale dealers to come into the community?
It would still be that same process. So what we're looking at is limiting it to two, so we've already fulfilled that requirement.
So, but by using the word retail, we're not, in essence, having a loophole of not being able to restrict wholesale dealers?
Councilmember Story, I think the distinction, remember, any FFL, under this ordinance as proposed, any license is going to have to come to the city council. So the issuance of any license is going to come to the council. The restriction on two retail dealers, that's the way it's crafted here. There are currently two retail dealers in the city. There is a third private license dealer, not a retail dealer, within the city. They're a member...
I could comment on that.
Give me the proper wording here for what this person's status is, and this ordinance as crafted today isn't intended to affect that situation.
There is an FFL dealer, and there are several of them around the state, who is a full-time peace officer for a state agency, who acts as their firearms expert, who does not do retail sales. This is more of a purpose to conduct transactions for his professional business.
Okay. Thank you. And if, yeah, did you want to...
There's a couple of points I did want to make. First, just directly related to that, both the number, the number, the retail number, and the spacing were something that we discussed several weeks ago with the council, but I don't feel that there was clear direction from the council. So we put these out, if you will, as stalking horses, just as some numbers for discussion. So I don't think that this necessarily has to be the magic answer, whether it's 2,000 feet, 1,000 feet, or no spatial requirement for these things. Alternatively, whether there's a maximum of two retail dealers, three retail dealers, whatever, I think that those are policy decisions that the council certainly should take into consideration tonight. The second piece, I just wanted to let the council know, while looking over the ordinance, you can see it up on the screen, it is in track changes as the ordinance was attached to your staff report. However, I did note that there was, one, the site business standards in A, the location must be in the community commercial zoning district. That was not properly underlined, and that is new text that is proposed for addition in this ordinance. So that section, the by-site, business site standards, there's two proposed changes in this urgency ordinance. One is that the location must be in the community commercial zoning district, and two, oh, sorry, that the business must be at least 2,000 feet. Again, your discretion, you had complete discretion to change any of the terms in this ordinance as crafted.
Okay, thank you. And if I have, I had one question, Chief.
Yes.
Concerning the recent tragic shootings of Officer Butler and Baker. And, I mean, and trying to, you know, make sure, hopefully, that this never happens again, and particularly to any of our officers. But, and the information I have is just what I read in the media. Shortly after this incident took place, the media... Shortly after this incident took place, the media seemed to quickly report that, you know, the perpetrator was a registered gun owner. Seemed to be widely known. But I also got a sense from reading, from the officer's perspective, that they were unaware of that situation. And I just wanted to ask, I mean, it's, when officers are being asked to go and do an investigation, and they know the identity of the individual, do they have the ability and access to look in a, in a database? It's certainly seen the media somehow was able to, and know that, well, you know, this person is registered with three guns, multiple weapons, and some, it sounded like were pretty high-powered weapons, so that they can know that in advance, protect themselves, and so that that is much less likely to happen to them. So, did, I mean, I was wondering if you could just illuminate, you know, or educate me about that situation, and whether or not that, in fact, is the current state of our gun registration laws?
I'll try and give you the best answer I possibly can. We, we have several contacts throughout the day, and in my experience, I've probably conducted thousands of additional follow-up questions, where I go to somebody's residence, and I will ask them, hey, I've got a couple of follow-up questions for you. In this instance, the two officers were investigating a misdemeanor. And a misdemeanor is that where no weapon was involved, is usually something that you can give a person a citation for, or even request a notice to appear. And so in those instances, you're not going to conduct that. There is information out there that is available, where we could check firearms registered to under a name. That doesn't mean that a person has a weapon there. In my experience as a SWAT commander, we would always do that for every person we knew, if we were going to do a search warrant at a house in a, in a SWAT situation, in a tactical situation. Those usually involve felonious firearm, gang-related, violent felonies. On a misdemeanor side, conducting interviews, just going to get a statement with no intent to arrest anybody, more than likely, you are not, especially if the crime is that of a misdemeanor, where there's public contacts or public conduct that doesn't rise to that level. Otherwise, we would be, we would, we'd be doing that a long period of time, and we wouldn't be able to get work done. I hope that answers your question.
I, I think it does, Chief, and I certainly appreciate it. And I certainly understand the subtleties of, and the practicalities of being able to do your job and do it in an efficient way. But I, I would certainly hope that, I mean, you as our chief, would kinda look at that practice, and to the extent where you can, you know, put in protocols and encourage our officers to check these things out, okay, so that they can be better prepared. Because certainly, this was a case where the simplest misdemeanor led to the most heinous outcomes.
I, I can, and I do agree with you, and I can assure you, the officers are really very diligent in that. In the press conference that I attended today, the sheriff relayed this, and I can only tell you from my knowledge, that even if the officers, while there, had bulletproof armor on, it would not have saved their lives.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. Thank you.
Question, before we open it, open it to the public?
Yeah, just a comment. Rudy, you know, thank you for the work you did on this. And this has been a real, it's an education process for all of us, I think the public too, in this, and it's something we need to discuss. It's unfortunate that things brought it to the point where, you know, we feel like we're pressed into this, but at the same time, the more I learn about gun laws, the less I know. You know, we're finding holes everywhere within our own gun laws, and also on the ability for people to get any kind of weapon at any time that they so choose. And we've, you know, those loopholes are being exposed, but it doesn't appear that nothing much will be done about those. Can I go back to the ammunition thing? Can we, can we license the sale of ammunition? In other words, can we require that a person that buys ammunition goes through the same licensing that they do for handguns?
Back in 2010, there was a requirement where the firearms dealer who sold ammunition had to collect a thumbprint and their driver's license, and that was repealed, and that's something that practice that they cannot do anymore. Now, I know there, like I had mentioned earlier, two other cities that currently have that in existence. Because the staffing levels, when I talk to them, they don't have people who are following up on that. In my conversations with the city attorney, it does not appear that we could regulate that. And so, under the preemption law, that we would be walking on some difficult territory, unless I'm mistaken.
Okay. Can, can you explain internet purchases, how that works?
Internet purchases, if they, by law, if I am a federal firearms dealer and I want to conduct a transaction, I have to follow the 10-day waiting period and the background process. I can facilitate a transaction between two people, and technically, by law, if, if you wanted to sell one handgun to another, I could, I should be doing that, and that, that's by law. The internet sales, if somebody is buying a firearm from, on the internet, from a licensed federal firearms dealer, they still have to go through the same process in the state of California. And if it's occurring from one state into California, it has to go to a licensed federal firearms dealer in the state. That's the legal way of doing it. Does it always happen? Absolutely not.
I, I think there's a third element to, to how we deal with new gun shops in town. And the first one is, is that, is that through a zoning ordinance, they must come to, to the Capitol City. Number two, that they need to have clearance from the police chief. But there's a third thing that, that is maybe even more important, is that the public is aware that something's coming into town. I think that's a real issue. I think the public needs to know and be aware that something is coming too close to your neighborhood or in your area, that is, that, that is a regulated type of business. And so, the third element's as important as the first two. And that's what, what we'll be creating here, is that we'll be creating a mechanism that requires the public to be involved in the process.
One thing I did wanna mention is, I agree with you, the laws in California are very complicated, and I'm in the same boat. The more I learn, the less I know, it seems like. I was thoroughly impressed with the manager at Outdoor World and his knowledge regarding the law, which is somebody that we want, who is going through that, and who is involved in that. And it's something that they, not all the employees there are authorized through the business. And so, I felt quite comfortable, and I use that manager as a resource as well, because trying to get hold of somebody to get a question asked up in Sacramento can be challenging sometimes. And so he, he's been a wealth of information for me.
Thank you, Rudy.
Question?
A couple of questions, yeah. First, Chief, I wanna comment that I did go to Outdoor World today, and I concur with you on the expertise at Outdoor World.
Thank you.
Just a couple of clarifications, just so I understand this, I'll try to keep it real simple. According to this ordinance that we're looking at, the only three provisions that are not consistent with state law are our choice of number of dealers, the distance, and the zoning district that must, must be located in.
That's correct. The distance piece, again, you have.
Right, the distance number.
Yeah, you have the flexibility, but the thousand feet of the schools, that's state and federal.
Oh, I got the, the schools I've got, I've been talking about between dealers.
That's correct.
These are the three that we are creating.
And that's correct.
There is no state law for those.
The other element that is in this ordinance, which is not already in state law, is that with this ordinance, possession of a firearms on city property would not be allowed.
Any other questions?
This is a public hearing. I'd like to open it up to the public, and please come forward, and you have about three minutes to give us your thoughts about this. Good evening.
Hi, how are you today? My name's Steve Waselko. I'm a resident of Aptos. I'm a federal firearms license, licensee. I am a firearms instructor. I'm a California Department of Justice handgun safety instructor as well. You know, in reading this proposal, you talk about the fear that's come up recently, and this is basically, that this whole urgency thing here is strictly fear-based. You know, this is not, you haven't, you have not thought this through at all. I mean, all of the, the different things in here, the majority of the things that are listed here are already covered by federal and state law. Firearms are the most heavily regulated retail item in the nation. California goes beyond that, as, as the chief already said. California has the strictest firearm laws in the nation, yet we have some of the highest firearm crime violence. Everything that's listed in here, as far as background checks and things that the chief has to do and everybody has to do, they're all already required federally. They're all already required by California. He already said, your two dealers that you have here are great, you have no problem. You've never had a problem with dealers here. Why is it urgent? There's never been a problem. There's never been a problem in California, because just to engage in this business, you're putting your life on the line. The Department of Justice, California, will not even answer questions for you regarding whether it, is this a rifle configured, you know, legally or not? They say, refer to the penal code. But if you mess up as a dealer, you can end up in jail, not just fines, end up in federal prison for 10 years. You have a running background check, all the things you guys already have listed here. The one thing that's really gotten me here is, is, I mean, a direct infringement of the Second Amendment is, yes, there is already a, you know, clause in place that you cannot have a firearm where it's to be accessed by a child. What you've stated in here in regards to firearm security, every owner of a firearm in the city shall be required to assure that each such firearm is locked and secured when he or she is not in actual possession of the firearm, so as to assure to the extent reasonable that no other person may access or use that firearm outside the presence of the owner. If I don't have children that come to my house, and I have my wife there, or I live with my brother, or I have a friend there, my house is locked. That firearm does not need to be locked up away from any other person. When somebody comes to break into their house at night, that means my wife, now, by your law, no other person, I have to lock that up from her. I have to lock that up from my brother. I have to lock that up from anybody other than me, the owner of the firearm. That is completely going against the preemption of state law. I think you're gonna find that there's gonna be massive lawsuits going on here regarding that. You are talking about banning gun shows, which there's never even been a gun show in Capitola. The county of Alameda just went through 12 years getting sued. Hundreds of thousands of dollars spent in trying to ban gun shows. And in the end, they just gave up and just said, okay, we'll allow gun shows here, probably because they knew that they were gonna lose, and they were gonna get hit with another million-dollar damages. It says here that, you know, there's no fiscal impact. There's gonna be a major fiscal impact. I can guarantee you that when you guys put these provisions into place, that there will be lawsuits against the city of Capitola. These are direct infringements of the rights. I'm not gonna get into this. There's a great letter here from Jason Davis. There's another letter from another attorney that I didn't see you guys have, representing the NRA and the California Rifle and Pistol Association, which detail pretty much how all of these are basically going against the preemption. Right now, anyone can sell ammunition. You can sell ammunition at a toy store right now. There are no regulations regarding selling ammunition federally or in California, other than armor-piercing ammunition and age requirements. Toys R Us right now could be selling ammunition, as long as they're selling it to people of the right age. You guys have no idea. You don't know what businesses in the Capitola right now are selling ammunition, because they did not need a license to do so. Here, it's saying, you know, you are grandfathered in if you are a firearms dealer who had previously obtained a firearms dealer permit. But you didn't need a permit to sell ammunition. You currently don't need a permit to sell ammunition. So, do you know, is every single business licensed to be a business in the city of Capitola gonna be contacted to ask if they're, if they sell ammunition now? How are you even gonna determine that? Because there is no regulation on that. Anyone can sell ammunition, as long as you are not selling it to children. Handgun ammunition has to be sold to people of 21. Rifle ammunition has to be sold to people that are 18 years old. You don't know what businesses, there are grocery stores that could be selling it, anyone could be selling it. Essentially, by saying, we're gonna only have two licensed dealers, and you already have two licensed dealers, you're just simply saying, we're not allowing any more gun shops, you know? Ammunition, the whole 500 thing, you know, the chief talked about, well, most people only buy 50 rounds of ammunition. 22 ammunition's probably the most common ammunition out there. It's, it's the first gun that everybody gets when they're a kid and they learn to shoot rifles. Very typically, sold in packs of 555, little boxes for like $23. So now, somebody who's buying their kid some ammunition to teach him how to shoot is subject to what's most likely an infringement on the Second Amendment. I think you guys are facing some serious, serious problems here, and there are gonna be a lot of suits against Capitola. And essentially, for nothing, because everything here is, for the most part, already covered by federal and state law. And free of charge to you, you know? The state's covering it, feds are covering it, and you're just saying, you know, we're, now we're gonna get involved in this, and all of a sudden, you know, do background checks and do all of these other things that are already being done. All of that, to spend extra money to do that, to spend extra time in the city council and the police, for something that's not gonna accomplish anything more than is already being done in the state and federally, and is very likely gonna subject you guys to lawsuits. I oppose this 100%.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Good evening.
How you doing?
Good, thank you.
My name is Chad Dewitt, and I live in Capitola. When I first read this, I thought, this is about the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen try to get passed. I mean, opening a business is hard enough without having to deal with more rules that the feds and states already deal with very seriously. Crime in Capitola is down by 15% in the last four years, and this ordinance should be thrown out because there is no emergency. I just feel this is a personal agenda against guns, and I've talked to Dennis Norton about this, and he is against guns 100%, and he's the first person that brought it up, and it is wrong. These are not personal agendas. You are representing the people. Limiting the number to two firearms dealers when there's already two is a ban. Gun shops are not dangerous. They do not bring crime. They do not cause problems. When you put circles around Big Five, Outdoor World, schools, city property, you are eliminating over 50% of the viable commercial space in the city. This, this makes it almost impossible for a gun shop to open in the city. And reporting over 500 rounds purchased on ammunition, some classes for handgun training and rifle training, handguns minimum of 500 rounds for a handgun class, that's one day. Rifle classes, a friend of mine, he did 4,000 rounds in two days in a rifle class, so that he could get better at handling his gun. And now he's gonna be looked at for buying that much ammunition. By limiting our access to firearms and ammunition, you are infringing on our Second Amendment right. The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed, and you have sworn to uphold this Constitution and all of its amendments. Thanks.
Thank you very much. There was a robbery at Outdoor World many years ago, and someone did break in and steal all their guns.
How many times has Granny Perp's been broken into?
I don't know. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Colleen Clark, and I live in Aptos, I'm in Capitola, part-time, and I live in Idaho, part-time. And I have a question for all five of you. How many have read the Constitution? Can I answer that individually, formally?
We, we don't take individual questions up here, but we're happy to hear your thoughts on this.
Okay, well, here's my thought. A well-regulated militia being necessary to secure of a free state, the right A well-regulated militia being necessary to secure of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. That is for one thing, political freedom. Freedom from your political control. The Constitution gives people the right, not the, they do not give it, are an inalienable right, to bear arms against a, a government that needs to be ousted. And you people have taken an oath to provide, to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. And if you sign on and go for this ordinance here, you are in violation of that, and you need to be recalled, impeached, fired, and probably put in jail. Because you've asked the people for their vote and said, we will represent you and represent the Constitution and the state Constitution. And these laws, most of your killings, and they're done by gangs. So you need to find out, how come the Justice Department doesn't take these people, put them in jail, and leave them there? You're putting criminals and people that are abiding, law-abiding citizens in the same pot. Not everybody that owns a gun is gonna go out and shoot somebody. This guy the other day, he was a sicko. He'd done things before, and those poor policemen that got killed, it's tragic, it's tragic. Not allowing us to have access to ammunition and guns, why are you doing this? Political freedom? Please, read your Constitution. Find out why you're sitting behind there. Because you are violating it, something that you're supposed to know. That's all. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Good evening.
Um, my name is Emma DeWitt, and I think having a firearm is a good thing. I feel safer knowing that we have guns. I think the world would be better if everyone had a gun, because if people knew that other people had a gun, a gun, or some guns, there would be less robberies, shootings, and violent crimes. I personally own two firearms, a shotgun and two, and a 22 Mossberg. I am trained to use them and I am part of the NRA. I take the responsibility of owning the guns very seriously, and I only use extreme safety at all times. Please don't restrict the sale of firearms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bob Thomas. I'm the owner, well, retired, four years now.
Congratulations.
Thank you. My two sons, two of my three sons are running Outdoor World on 41st Avenue. We've been there since, well, I wanna say 1986. We started with the downtown store in 1970. Uh, it was called Peninsula Surplus, and we carried guns at that time when there was no ATF, believe it or not. But we kept track of the guns that we sold, uh, and we also kept track of the ammunition that we sold by keeping a list on an ordinary tablet. I'm, uh, first of all, I wanna thank your chief because, uh, I had an interest with him once when he shared with me a gun that they found near the jail that was stolen and returned it to me because originally was registered and sold by us. But, uh, I, I'm very proud of the business that we generate. I think you're doing a good thing in trying to address it, and I noticed some of the things that he put down are some of the things that he got from my manager, David Vokland, there at the Outdoor World store on 41st Avenue. So I'm, I'm pleased to tell you that I will try to be back here again at the next meeting to see how far I can go with this initiative, regulation, whatever you wanna call it. We are known in the industry as having gone the extra mile to protect the customers in our store. We have had a customer that robbed our employee right there of a gun, because that was years ago when we used to allow a piece of ammunition that fit that gun shown to him at the same time. We learned the lesson, put it in the gun, and pointed at the clerk, and walked out with a gun. The police caught him in the old Kmart parking lot years ago, and Kmart was on 41st, whereas now Home Depot, he was trying to sell the gun to raise some money. We've had a lot of experience, we go the extra mile, and, uh, we have all of the things that the chief has spoken of. We also have some things that he didn't mention that you might want to consider with some of the other people that might want to have showcases full of guns. We have shatterproof glass on our showcase. If you wanna throw a brick through it or a gun butt, it's not gonna break through and allow you at night, after we've closed, to get some guns. We've done many things like that to help protect our investment. And we put our guns away at night, as you've suggested, and, uh, and I, I'm encouraged by what you're trying to do. I'm also an avid member of the NRA. I believe in the First Amendment, as these people have suggested, or Second Amendment, that these people have suggested, and I'm simply here to tell you that, uh, I hope you look at this, but it's not gonna solve the problem of people getting, people getting killed in Santa Cruz County. It's not gonna solve it. Criminals get guns illegally, most often, and use them to kill people. Have you ever seen an ATF form that we fill out in the Department of Justice forum? I'd like to leave these with you here. There are six pages of the ATF form that we have to fill out when someone buys a gun. Three pages of questions and three pages of information on how to, to, uh, on how to have the customer fill it out. He reads that. We also have, we also have to fill out in a, uh, dealer record of sale, somewhere here. Whoops, what did I do with it? Which is a state form. Uh, here it is. I thought I blocked six. Yeah, here they are. I guess I gotta separate it somewhere or another. There's six of those. That's a one-page form. And a two-page, actually, one page of information and one page of, uh, how to fill it out for the customer. And I'd like to share with you, also, I see my time is up. Could you give me another minute?
Yep.
I gave a talk to about 35 or 40 women last Tuesday, or Tuesday, this, this past Tuesday, that are interested, were interested in guns. I shared with them 20 minutes about guns and how you buy one, and, and another 20 minutes was shared by a local physician, or MD, and a psychologist here in town, who shared with them, uh, and here's some more copies of hers. I got her permission to give you this. It, it's not a, it's not a, a, a problem with, like, we had a Sandy Hook of someone that is mentally ill getting a gun, according to her. And, and I've read that twice, and it's an excellent article that she put together to speak to the women this past Tuesday. So, really, I guess all I wanna say is that, uh, we do what we can to keep the hands out of criminals. We sell them to good people. And let me say one thing that, to help what Chief Escalante said, there's a $75 charge, and you have, if you buy a gun in another state, internet or whatever, there's a $75 charge to transfer it into California, and they have to go through a dealer. We take these guns, uh, almost one a week, and charge $75. $25 of that goes to the ATF, and we keep the other $50 for all of the paperwork. So, uh, they're trying to control those on the internet, too. And, and I'm, I'm available to answer any questions you might want to, to have.
Any questions? Thanks very much for coming down here, and thanks very much for the information that you brought us.
All right, thank you.
And I hope you are enjoying your retirement.
I have one quick question for you. I was reading the website, I was confused. Do you still have the Outdoor World in Santa Cruz?
Uh, yes.
Do you sell guns out of that store also?
Uh, yes, we do. We sell pistol, uh, we don't sell pistols. We sell shotguns and rifles in that store.
No handguns?
No handguns. We were asked to not carry them, about the fifth year that we were there. We moved over to where we are and changed our name from Peninsula Surplus, down on Pacific Avenue, to Outdoor World in 1976. And we, and about three years later, uh, we were asked to not carry pistols there anymore. Someone broke in, uh, and was hanging from the rafters up above, and the police caught him because he fell right down in front of them. Lost his hope.
Thank, thank you.
To bet.
Thanks very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
The treasurer would like to.
Oh, the treasurer, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna make some comments. So, um, I do just want to make sure that as elected officials, we all take our responsibility to protect and defend the oath we took, uh, to protect and defend the Constitution, and, um, really pay special attention on infringing upon the right, infringing upon someone's right. And I do believe that restricting the sale of firearms by limiting access, by limiting the number of stores available, does infringe upon the public's right. And, um, I also wanna say that, uh, restricting the number of stores really will have no impact on safety.
Can I, can I, can you, you should stand up at the podium and state this, because you're saying this is a member of the public, correct?
I'm, I'm actually just saying it as, as the treasurer, as a member of the-
Oh, this is, this is a financial issue?
Um, well, there are financial issues involved, certainly with the lawsuits that are, are being discussed and were presented. So, um, uh, also, I did wanna say that, uh, I am aware of an individual who does wanna open a store in Capitola. And I'm not sure if all of this is in response to that individual's inquiry. But I do wanna make the council aware that that individual is, um, very, very responsible, a very, uh, quality individual, and, um, he's looking to bring, uh, safety and education to the community. And so if, if this is about restricting him, I'm, I, I hope that we're not using this horrible tragedy to create unnecessary laws. And then, um, I just wanted to also let you know that just this afternoon, a man was murdered in Watsonville with a gun at 3:00 PM. Two people attacked him and stabbed him, and this individual, had he had access to a firearm, or the ability to protect and defend himself, or perhaps someone else in the community, um, maybe he would still be with us today. And I just don't think that there are enough police to be able to, uh, protect everyone if we are to limit access to firearms. And we aren't really tackling the problem because we aren't enforcing our existing gun laws. And the cost to the taxpayer with a rash decision without having heard from the public is, is really an important consideration. So, um, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll bring it back to the council. Would, who would like to start?
Sure.
I was looking forward to this ordinance as a way to bring new gun shops to us for approval, rather than just have them have carte blanche, just getting a business license and opening up. Because I thought that the public and the council should be able to weigh in on almost any kind of an operation that, that is as serious as a gun dealer. We do the same for much less, uh, retail operations of much less concern. We bring them here because they're not just permitted uses, where someone can just walk in, get a business license, start selling handguns, rifles, whatever. And what I receive is so much more, and I have concerns because, uh, you know, especially this week, we cannot let emotion lead us to bad policy. We cannot let emotion lead us to bad decisions. You know, the best way, and I know it's gonna come up, and I know we're gonna talk about, at some point, these, my colleagues and myself are gonna talk about honoring the people who lost their lives with this kind of hard enforcement. My attitude is, we honor the memory of our law enforcement by being careful, by being well-informed, and doing cautious legislation. I like this ordinance in principle. The things I do not like about this ordinance are the, um, the distance between the gun dealers, it's irrelevant. If I had my druthers, you know, and we had four gun dealers in Capitola, I'd like them all to be in the same place. You know, let them, it, it elevates the, the game. It, it makes them better. Because we have arguably one of the best gun dealers I've ever encountered, um, doing business right here in Capitola, one of the most conscientious. I want, I prefer no maximum number listed. I'm satisfied with if someone wants to, uh, to be a licensed gun dealer, they come to us for the use permit, we give them the a or nay, depending on whatever the conditions are. I'd like to strike any language about increase in retail space. It seems to have gone by the board here. If Outdoor World wants to put in an additional case of display of firearms, the way I read the ordinance, I don't know that they're allowed to do that. There's specific language in there, and that's, just doesn't feel right to me. And the reason, by the way, I don't like the distance is that what, what we've created here is a thinly veiled attempt at eliminating all gun sales in Capitola. That's basically what this reads to the untrained eye. And we are all untrained. I don't know, anybody up here is a gun expert. I certainly am not. But the ordinance reads so that if one, if, you know, Big Five has a flood or fire or something and is destroyed, it cannot be rebuilt and sell firearms because it's an, an existing non-conforming use. They lose. So that, they drop off the radar. We can leave ammo language away from it because, as I suspected, there is no, um, federal firearm dealer licensing for just selling ammo. Therefore, we don't know who sells ammo. We, we have a good idea that nobody does, except Outdoor World and, um, and Big Five, but we don't know. You probably can't get it at Toys R Us, but that's another story. I think that with regard to safe and secure in the home, I think our language is a little restrictive, and I think that following the safest and best practices for securing firearms is strong enough language. That someone that goes through the firearm safety course, someone that is licensed to purchase firearm, and someone who takes control of it, is very, very well aware of safeguards that need to take place, keeping, storing, and using guns in the home. I think that should be it. I worry about the litigation on gun shows, but I'll let that go. There's never been a gun show in Capitola. I don't know anybody who wants to bring a gun show to Capitola, but just as an aside, and I will, I can vote for this with the gun show stuff in there, and we'll take it out when the lawyers come after us. Little statistic, in, in violent crimes, that tracing the weapons from violent crimes back to gun shows is just a little over 1% of the weapons used in violent crimes have originated at a gun show. So, dramatic. When you start to dig into this, and Dennis, I agree, the more I read, the less I know. So, I, I don't wanna stop this cold, but, you know, California is the toughest gun control in the nation. We need more enforcement. The thing that, you know, we have conscientious dealers, um, and yet it's still, it, it bothers me and it, it makes me wonder that we've had guns in this country for hundreds of years, and now, in the last 20 or 30 years, people are taking them and committing unbelievable acts of mass murder. acts of mass murder. I don't, I can't trace that to the gun. There's something else going on here. And I can't put my finger on it. Mental health, I mean, there are so many issues with this week's tragedy from, you know, owning guns and being, you know, mentally unbalanced, to how we care for our veterans. You know, you have to think about that, too. How did we have someone in our military service and not take them to our bosom if they were, if there was an emotional, mental problem? We let them out in the street, discharge them. There are just too many questions here. So those are my issues with this. I think at its core, it does what I wanted it to do, which is if, if a, if a responsible person wants to come and wants to enter into a business and wants to sell guns, all well and good, they go through their process federally, the chief, they come to us, the public knows about it, yea or nay, and we move along. And it's, it's more of a land use and a licensing, a noticing issue than anything else. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
And I might add, you know, I'd like to live in a world where there are no guns, there's no war, everybody's happy, and nobody ever does anything bad to each other. I should live that long. I'd also like to live in a world where I never have to see a, a black tape over a policeman's badge. What can I say?
Sam?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your comments, Mike. And my initial review is that, yeah, this was an ordinance just to be able to bring the issue to the city council, so that we would have the ability to review these applications for new gun retailers in the community. I think that is the right thing to do. I think that the public has the right to know. I think that the local community has a right to control its own land use. It is a part of our job, and it is written into our constitution, that we are able to preserve the health, safety, and welfare of our local community. And so to these limited extents, I think that we should do that. I think, I agree with you, Mike, that maybe we, it's a bit arbitrary to just say that it should be two. Maybe we should not have a set number, but they should come back to us and it should be reviewed, and it should be a conditional use. And so to me, this is just a land use issue, which is in our purview to do, and that we should direct the staff to maybe go back and look at it from that perspective and bring us back something reflective of our comments. I want to talk, though, a little bit about, you know, the greater issues and comments made. And because those are, to some extent, the most difficult, I think, issues and matters to navigate here. You know, we, obviously, you know, it is a potentially emotional topic. We hear a lot of emotional, I think, presentations. And I agree, we should not act based on our emotions, but I also think that we should not stand still based on our emotions. You know, when I arrived here, I received these letters from lawyers representing the NRA and the California Rifle and Pistol Association, and from other attorneys. And they're, you know, mostly just threatening, threatening litigation. And the trouble I have with it, and some of the testimony tonight, is an unrecognition of the current condition that we find ourselves in. There was a statement made about there has nothing that has happened, okay, to warrant us taking these, which I consider modest steps, okay? Well, from my perspective, a great deal has happened. It may be necessarily not happened here, but I don't think that we need to wait until it happens here before we do anything. And there may be other state and federal laws, but from my perspective, they have been wholly inadequate. They are not serving our purpose. And the difficulty that I have with these letters is a failure of recognition of the tremendous tragedies that we have seen and faced in other communities. And no recommendations about how they feel we should address that. I assume that we all have these same interests at heart, and that none of us, gun owner or non-gun owner, want to see these things continue. So what do we do? What are the things that we can come together and agree should be done? They are not represented in these letters. I would like to hear from them about how do we do that? If what we're doing is wrong, tell us what's right, okay? To me, these are just modest steps so that we can review applications as they come in. I think that that's what the community elected us to do in protecting, you know, the public welfare in this community of Capitola, and that we don't have to wait until a tragedy happens before we just react. And so I would hope and plead that we could get some assistance and support in looking at the true issues that are facing us. Because on the one hand, I hear that we're infringing people's Second Amendment rights, and on the other hand, I hear that this will have no impact. Well, I, you know, it's got to be one or the other. And we need to find some path to help and solve these problems. And if this isn't it, I would like to see us take some steps. If nothing else, it brings the issue to light. And if the attorneys want to come descend on us, well, maybe we should have that conversation. And maybe if more communities in the state and across the country were to take some steps, that maybe then the attorneys would be coming to us talking about means and acceptable means, recognizing that we don't want mass killings in our malls, in our schools, or in our churches, or, you know, seeing our officers being gunned down. We want to keep the guns out of the hands of those that would use them for the wrong purposes, not out of the hands of those law-abiding citizens. But we need to try to come together with some measures to move us in that direction. I think this is a modest step. I would support maybe some of the changes that you had proposed, Mike, but I think that we should proceed with this. And hopefully, we can, with the proponents of the Second Amendment, which I think we all are, we have a different interpretation of maybe really what it means, but that we can come together and balance the interests of, you know, the right to life that everyone has, in addition to the Second Amendment rights that everyone has. So those are my thoughts, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Dennis.
I spent a year, year and a half of my life in a war zone. I know what weapons are, I know what they do. I choose not to have a weapon in my life. I know many people that do, most of my neighbors choose the same way. In exercise of the Second Amendment, I don't deny any person from having the right to have a gun, but I want them to be responsible with that gun, and I want them to keep it in a responsible way, and I want to make sure that they're, they're not jeopardizing my territory where I'm not carrying one. And, and looking at the Second Amendment, the Second Amendment says we have the right to bear arms, but you remember at the time that the Second Amendment was written, everybody was carrying a single-shot musket. Quite a bit of difference between that and AR-15 or a Peter pistol. So we're in a completely different world this time in the Second Amendment than we were at that time. I'm just asking that this community be as safe as responsibly we can make it in our gun laws here. And I don't see anything that we're proposing tonight that steps into anyone's Second Amendment. And I'm not going to be bullied by the NRA. That's the last people in the world, they've already done it to, to our higher levels of government. And it's got to stop. And so we need to take a stand here, and we need, we need to do what we think is best and safest for this community. And I think that what Rudy has written for us is, is a good start to that. I don't think it should end tonight, it needs to go on. But this is a start to it. And, and I agree, Michael, the distance between them isn't a big issue with me either, but I think the rest of the amendments that are in here, I think, need to go forward. And we need to show the public that we're concerned about their health and welfare. And believe me, I've heard from a lot of people in the last two weeks that, that support us up here. And we'll, we'll get, we'll, obviously, for this type of issue, we'll get good publicity and we'll get some negatives. It will be, it will be a discussion in this country a few years to come. But we got to start facing the problem. And the problem starts with the fact that this country has more weapons combined than every, the combined of all the countries in the world, all in, all in our country. And we have some, obviously have some mental problems to deal with here with our, with our public and how to deal with that. So this is the first step. And this is, as a community, we need to do what we need to do to protect our community. And zoning regulations, as we're proposing, really is a good start to that.
Ted?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this measure came to us a couple of weeks ago on Valentine's Day, and at the time, we had just had the, the speech from the President, and at the end of that, it was very emotional about guns, and I believe about the need for us to do something. There was no solution that was offered, other than we need to do something. And I think that's what we all sense up here, is a need to do something. And obviously, since then, based on the tragedy that just occurred, it would be very emotional to react to that. But I think we've all heard from people, this is a, my problem with this is, you know, I don't own a gun, I don't shoot guns. This is more about, I think, the Constitution and the rights we have. And there's parts of the Constitution that I don't like, and it's possibly because I interpret it different, and I think we all interpret it different. But the one thing I know is that as I sit up here, I'm reminded of my task is to, you know, use the information I get at the best and make an interpretation, but it's not for me to decide the law. It's why we have an attorney, and that's why we have state laws. And, you know, I'm glad that the chief is doing the work that he is. He's obviously on top of it, he gives us the best information. I think we are following state law to the best that we can. Our business owners are following state law to the best that they can. California by far has the strictest standards. I've spoken with people in the state, out of the state, the things that you can buy outside of the state, we would be sick. But it comes down to the basic issue, you know, which you have to look at, is, is it about the guns? And although the guns are used to kill people, you know, we've had, 100 years ago, we had guns, but we didn't have the tragedies that are happening now. So I offer that maybe it's something to do with behavior, not necessarily the guns. And if we're going to look at a solution, we need to address the behavior. I, I think that we should continue to adopt every state law that is made. The chief says 35 bills, I think that was the number, are currently being reviewed. If it comes down to regulating ammunition, if it comes down to regulating anything, I support that. I don't want to put the City of Capitola in a position to fight lawsuits. When I ran for this office, I told every door I knocked on, I don't want to spend any more money on litigation. And, you know, starting litigation, taking on the NRA, I don't believe it's going to solve this problem. I think that we need to have our lawmakers continue to work on this, we can certainly give them input. But at this time, I think the ordinance goes above where we want it to go. You know, we, if somebody comes into town, if there's some kind of way, we should look at every business, you know? We don't want a mayor who want a distributing place in this town. If that came to us, we'd make a decision on it. But the only thing that I would support is anything that made that license come to us to look at. I don't want to restrict business, and I definitely don't want to hamper businesses that run good businesses and blend with the community and provide services to the community. I'm really not here to be a proponent or an opponent of Outdoor World or Big Five. But the ordinance, as it's written right now, I cannot support, so those are my feelings.
Thank you very much. Well, this isn't the first time that we've talked about it, so I, I know people may see us as, as making a decision based on motions, but we talked about this years ago, we just never did anything about it. There was a shop in the village for a while that sold swords and guns, and, and I got a bunch of calls, and people said, how can you allow that? And so I said, I don't know, let me look into it. So I went down there and took a look at it, and I talked to the chief, and he said, well, those guns don't work, they're antiques. And if somebody wants to, you know, buy a sword, you know, they can buy a sword there. And anyway, just, what didn't really fit in the village very well, and then people thought it was kind of creepy, and so forth and so forth. Anyway, everybody that I've talked to about this last couple of weeks was very supportive of us, of us doing something, whether it's little steps, or whether it seems symbolic, or they were, they, they really thought that in a town, two and a half square miles with two gun shops, you know, that's maybe enough. And they really, the, the, the idea of having more, it was pretty distasteful to, to the people that I talked to. And I'm sorry that those people aren't here tonight, but I got a lot, we got a lot of positive feedback on that. And people do want us to do something. They, they really do. Even though, you know, it hasn't been that much of a problem here, it's, it's a problem in other places. And they really want, the public really wants and needs more education about guns. I'm fine with them being required that they be locked up, because I think that's the safe place for them when somebody's not at the shooting range. And so I'm fine with that. As far as the distance, I don't have a problem with that. But, and if the council wants to look at, you know, adding one more, I wouldn't be in favor of that. I think we, two and a half square miles, two stores is fine, so. Maybe there's some room for some compromise here, or some, but would anyone like to make a motion, or?
Somebody try this?
This could be one of these six-motion nights. Okay.
Oh, when the city manager has a comment first.
Concerned with making a motion in specifics, and I, and I think what I'd like to do is make the motion with regard to direction to staff, to bring this back to us rewritten with the changes. What do you think, Mr. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Termini, I, I'm sitting here trying to find a path forward for you tonight. So the urgency ordinance requires a four-fifths vote. Just listening to the council, it was not exactly clear to me that there would be a four-fifths vote for this ordinance as written. So I think you have a couple options. One option is, is as Councilmember Termini suggested, that you make a motion to provide direction. Another option would be, you make a motion to provide direction to come back at a future meeting. Another option is, is you could give us some direction here, we could call a five-minute break, and we could attempt to make the changes here, put it back up on the screen for consideration. Those are both options. And alternatively, what we could do is take direction, bring it back as a regularly, regular ordinance, which would require simply a four, a regular majority vote. So those, I think, are all on the, on the table tonight.
Allow me to try going forward with this as it is, with the changes that I suggest, and see if it gets a four-fifth. If not, then I think direction and coming back as a regular ordinance makes sense. Does that sound like a good start? Okay. The, the items that I would like to strike, Mr. City Manager, I'll let you get ready.
Do you want me to put it up on the screen so we can--
Oh, no, don't put it up on the screen, you're going to go crazy. Believe me, you're going to need more than five minutes on this one.
Okay.
No distance requirement between gun shops--
What page are you on, Mike? I'm sorry.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, then bring it up and follow me, because I'm going to be all over the place.
E, G on--
Page 110.
Okay. No distance requirement.
No maximum number listed?
Maximum number. Yeah, I got it.
Okay, sorry. Let's see. No language regarding increase in retail space within the licensed gun dealer's establishment?
What section is in?
It's in a couple of sections, and I'm sure if you can find it. There's language with regard to increases in firearm, there it is. 5 dot 32 dot 180.
32 180?
With regard to locking in the home, when you bring, come to that, there. That firearm security follow the, the safest and best practices for the ownership of a Which should be self-evident by any gun safety class that anyone takes before they own a firearm. firearm.
And they are just, I hate to interrupt, but they are required by law when they make that purchase.
To have a gun lock?
Yes.
Correct.
And do a, a safety display.
Right.
Is this, does that look?
And I, yes, I'm aware of that, right. That the, the standard safe practices for the securing of firearms in the home. The, this is the one place where I'm a little foggy, and that is, language regarding ammunition. Can you get to that spot? Firearms dealer is one, any business that sells, distributes, advertises, exposes for sale, lease, or transfer of any firearm, period. Because we, we cannot, with any certainty, call someone who sells ammunition, which is not required to be licensed by the federal government, a licensed firearm dealer, just by the, the definition of the word firearm. And I think that's all I have. Did I catch, did I catch everything?
Wait, you have a concern by zone DLO?
You mean, the, the community commercial?
Yeah.
I think that's, that's entirely within, you know, we're, we're not going to let someone open up a, a microbrewery in a neighborhood.
Right.
So I think zoning is pretty.
I think it should stay in CC.
Yeah, like I said, my whole focus on this was purely land use, and purely where these establishments are, and, and having them be, you know, come to us, that's all. I'm good.
Did you want to discuss the gun show language?
You know, we just kicked out the St. Patrick's Day, we can always say no to anything that comes to town.
Yeah, you know, presently, if someone wants to have a gun show at the mall, could happen. They have to come to us for permission for a license?
I can further extend on that, that you would actually need a, a license from DOJ, a specific license.
Right.
Authorized to have a gun show.
And do they have to come to us as well?
That's correct.
To the, to the council?
That's correct.
Right now, presently?
Well, under the zoning change, right now, they would just come to me.
Just have them, gun show comes to the council, just like the special event permit for the St. Patrick's Day parade, which is, probably was more dangerous than a gun show.
Which, which, if we took this language out, they would need, the gun show would need an FFL license, right?
That, which is as it is now, right?
They, correct. There are certain license, FFL license types.
Right.
And some of them have more permissions.
Latitude?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Like a level six or a level one, most of them are level one, but there's one through least six that I believe, there might be more.
So not unlike a special event permit, as long as they come, they have to come to us, and that we don't wake up one morning and see a poster for a gun show that we or no one in the community has ever heard of.
Right.
But why even have it in there unless we're interested in having it? And I don't think the community is interested in having one.
Well, I don't know if the community is interested in having it, because maybe an antique gun show might go over really big in the community, I don't know. See, the problem we have is, none of us have a, the desire or the inclination to own fire, or be, whether it be sport or personal protection, have guns. So we're, in many respects, ill-educated and ill-inclined to do anything in favor of a segment of our society that has a legal and, and constitutional right to be involved in the activity. So I think we need to, just as, I can't think of anything right now, respect that activity. There are things that I don't personally engage in, and yet, we rule on all the time, and I go, "Yeah, yeah," you know, whatever floats your boat. It's, it's not that, from what I've observed, there's no one in this room, or who will ever come in this room up to this podium, who are the people who are causing us harm and destruction with firearms. There's a whole segment of the society that, that truly enjoys this activity, and we need to respect that as much as we respect people who like to stand up paddleboard, or surf, or bicycle. I know that's a real mixed metaphor, and it's, it's crazy, but what I'm saying is, maybe a gun show would garner a lot of attention. It probably never will, because it never has. But I think if it comes in, just like with the gun shop, we need to be able to say, "Yeah, okay, we see what you're doing." People come in, talk to us, they like it, they don't like it, the community in general agrees with it, doesn't agree with it, it happens or it doesn't happen, but it comes forward. All we're looking for is, you know, free-flowing governance, that's all.
From an informational perspective, just to, I'll give you this, the penal code does have exemptions regarding antiques, and I can't recall what the specific year is, so I, I don't want to guess on that. And also, there are certain firearms listed that are exempt for the Olympic competition shoots.
Right.
So those are listed as well, just as an information.
There are so many things that we have no knowledge of, that we're truly ignorant of, that, that we need to be, and we, we often do this, we become better educated with every issue that comes before us. So if, if a gun show is proposed, it needs to come before the council. And that, that's my motion, did I?
Did you want to touch on the city property, or is it good?
No, I think everything else I'm okay with.
Okay, the vicinity on schools and the city property.
Yeah, I think that should stay in.
Pretty rational.
Concerning the city property, but on the gun shows, currently, the way it's written, it just prohibits the, the gun show, but it defines a gun show as an event where guns are sold, transferred, leased, or offered for sale, okay? So if we're going to leave it as possible that those will be considered, I think that we should have the same standards that we would apply to any applicant for the sale of firearms, because that's a temporary use, but it's a, it's still the same.
Well, right, and I, and I'm saying, put it in there, but it has to come to us, not unlike.
But, right, and, but I'm saying that some of the standards that we apply to considering a retail outlet should be applied to the gun show. In other words, it needs to be in CC, and these other factors would need to be reviewed and approved, so that, I mean, who was ever sitting up here considering has some guidelines that we feel that should be considered.
I mean, if the mall wants to have a gun show, and they're on, you know, two-by-five, or two-by-eight tables out in the parking lot, exposed, you know, we may want to have something to say about that, just like.
Yes.
We require a gun shop to have walls and a ceiling and a locked door, you know, just, these are basic things.
I believe the way the ordinance is, we took the gun show language out, I believe that the fitness dancer, it's standards here, that the Capitol City Council shall have the sole discretion to approve or deny any application for a license brought pursuant to this chapter, which effectively gives you the authority to approve or deny, subject to the language in the chapter, you have the CC zone district requirements, and then a reference back to all of the neighborhood compatibility findings that are required in the zoning ordinance.
And I, and I think this respects the Second Amendment, and at the same time, respects the possible opinions of the rest of the community, all at the same time.
As another informational point on consult, consulting with the city attorney, you are authorized by state law and California Constitution as the authority to regulate the sale, lease, or transfer of firearms within the city jurisdiction.
Right. Fully understood. And, and at the same time, you know, we're not banning anything, I mean, there's, there's nothing in this language, and there's nothing in the intent, sincerely, that, that is directed to deprive anyone of ownership, to take, knock on doors and take people's firearms away. I, you know, fully respect that, and, and feel it's one of my responsibilities as an elected official, to respect all the residents. So that's my motion, you heard it. What say you?
I second that motion.
It's not, cannot be real.
That was the best response.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think we're going to do a roll call, because four-fifths voting.
Uh, he's gonna, we need a.
Sure.
Can you read the motion? Oh.
It's very lengthy.
The motion was to take this ordinance and remove reference to the distance between gun shops, to remove reference to the maximum allowable number of gun shops, to remove language regarding increase in retail space, to remove language regarding ammunition sales, to change the locking of guns that only the, the registered owner may access it, to safe gun practices in securing firearms in the home. And removing a ban on gun shows. That is the motion. Thank you, public.
Roll, roll call, please.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Councilmember Botor?
Aye.
Councilmember Termany?
Aye.
Mayor Harlan?
No, because I don't want to see more gun shops in Capitol.
And it passes? And it opens up, this opens up the discussion. You know, I, I think that responsible gun owners, registered gun owners, are just as tormented by tragedy, they are just as concerned when bad things happen, and frankly, the, the gun owners that I know, that's one of the reasons that leads them to be registered gun owners. If there were no evil, you know, no one would be carrying one for protection.
This, this doesn't end discussion on this issue.
Absolutely not.
No, it, it opens it, it opens it.
Opens it.
And I will tell you this, just as personal experience, I have walked into out west bars in states where concealed carry is a God-given right, and I've never seen a more well-behaved bar in my life, so I'll leave it at that.
I don't think there's any God-given right about guns, but, but I, I want to, I'll make a point, Mike, about, about rules and leg, regulations that we live in society with, you know, we all drive cars, and we all have licenses. We all want to know that the guy knows what side of the road to drive on, how to signal and do those things. So those are kind of accepted things, they're norms that you create within society, and often, they're rules. The rules that, that you have to take a test to pass a test, that you show that you're competent with, with the car itself, and that you're, you, you must be a little bit mentally stable to be able to go through the test, and you go through that. And I don't, I don't see gun use or gun, gun ownership any different than that. And, and if you, you know, I can trust any person that is competent with that, but I, but it's, it's the fact that when those guns are out there, they should be, be under the same rules that society has for regulations that, that control them.
And Chief, anytime you want us to write a letter in support of a bill, when it gets to that point, to our Assembly member or Senator, let us know, we'll be happy to do that.
I would like to also look at, at Feinstein's bill for, on assault weapons, too, Rudy, if you could, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to our next item, which is 10C, consideration of approving the revised board, commission, and committee guide procedures, the city manager memorandum regarding public meeting teleconferencing procedures, and the teleconferencing request form.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. This item is regarding a revision of the board, commission, and committee procedures. The last revision was done in 2006. And basically, the, the procedure sets forth the policy to be followed by staff liaison concerning agenda preparation, meeting conduct, and other admin matters involving the city advisory committees, and it also provides some forms. There are various city committee members that have requested to either telephone into a public meeting or Skype into the meeting, and this is, there are very specific requirements according to the Brown Act. And the, the Act, the Brown Act does allow that legislative bodies may use any type of teleconferencing in communication, in connection with a public meeting, but there are specific requirements. And so in the draft administrative procedure, I have included some recommended changes, and also referencing, instead of trying to spell out all the requirements of the Brown Act, is to reference to the League of California Cities website regarding open and public meetings, and a guide to the, to the Act, and also specifically listing the procedures for approval for teleconferencing pursuant to the, to the Brown Act, as well as the staff responsibilities. So the recommendation tonight is to approve the revised procedures, and also the city manager's memorandum, which would go to all the different committees and staff liaisons, and also the teleconferencing request form. And I do have one correction on the, on the request form, the last box that they should check is consult the city attorney or assistant city attorney prior to the teleconferencing of a meeting, which may not really be necessary, as long as they follow all the requirements of the Brown Act. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any additional information?
Basically, what you're doing here is we're revising our policies to keep it current with the current Brown Act. In addition, because there's been this conversation about teleconferencing, I just wanted to send a memorandum out to all of our city committees explaining how, if you were going to teleconference into a Brown Act meeting, it would be done appropriately, because it is a relatively complicated process.
One, one question. The reason for only one person being allowed to teleconference?
I don't believe that there's a minimum number, you, you have to have a.
The maximum number says only one.
Maximum number is only one.
Maximum number is one, it says.
I, I will defer to my city clerk, maybe he's more familiar with this topic.
I'm not sure the reasoning, I just referenced that from the Brown Act.
Okay, that came from the Brown Act. Okay, all right.
But it, just for clarity, if we're having this meeting here, and one of the council members is not able to be here, and they teleconference in, if they're in their hotel room in Timbuktu, that hotel room in Timbuktu has to be publicly accessible by anybody who wants to come in and, and watch it?
Councilmember Termany, I don't think that a hotel room would be an acceptable place to teleconference to this meeting, I think you need to teleconference, all locations need to be publicly accessible. So I think, for example, if, if a council member were to teleconference into the meeting, they would need to be calling from, say, a coffee shop or a hotel lobby, but that's place would have to have been noticed pursuant to the Brown Act 72 hours prior to the meeting.
And the place doesn't just have to be noticed, it has to be available to the public.
Right, they have to be available to give public comment from that location.
Oh, so the pub, someone from the public has to be available in that place, and this is not something that we just cooked up, this is like.
This is the law.
This is the law.
Right.
Okay, no, I just want to make sure, I want to, you know, because I, I'm concerned, because I have a, an art and cultural commissioner, a very valued, valued art and cultural commissioner that, that, that teleconferences into all of our meetings, which means that unless her home, which is where she teleconferences from, were a public place, noticed and available for the public to come in and a public comment, she can no longer do this.
I, I don't believe a home would be considered a, a public place.
Okay.
The Brown Act, so I think she could go to a coffee shop or something and teleconference in, or some other publicly accessible place. But to the best of my knowledge, I don't, I don't believe that a home would generally qualify under the Brown Act's provisions.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Termany, I believe it also has to be ADA accessible and all of those things, so a home.
Got it.
Might not comply with that.
Any other comments or questions about this? I would hope that somebody wouldn't teleconference every, for every meeting, I mean, I think there's value in participating with the group.
Well, we just had that at the Commission on the Environment, they were talking about having someone teleconference for six months.
For a short, for a, for a short period of time.
This was brought up because we were having that more, larger conversation about people teleconferencing in the meetings, and I was concerned that people weren't aware of sort of how that could be done. Now, I, I will note that participation in meetings could be done from a non-committee member telephonically. Now, that would be up to the, the committees as a body to decide whether that was an appropriate way for somebody else to provide testimony and input into the process, but for a non-voting member of the committee, that's certainly an option if the committee adopts rules that would allow it, but they wouldn't be a member of the committee if that, if that's clear.
So if we were a big enough city, and we had like a satellite community room in a library somewhere, where we had the whole place filled with people talking about guns, and there were another 50 people who wanted to observe it and make public comment, we could, we could have them video conference in from that other public meeting place to have communication with the council.
To provide public testimony. Yeah, you could provide public, public testimony in a variety of ways, some cities will have allow people to pick up the phone and call council during the meeting, as long as it's public, you know, publicly disclosed. So certainly, for non-committee members, there's more latitude, and it would be up to the committee as a body to decide whether or not they would want to take that kind of input. As a committee member, the Brown Act is quite restrictive in how you can call in, basically, to the meeting.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, also, I have the Brown Act here open, and it does state that at least a quorum of legislative body must participate from locations within the local agency's jurisdiction, and I can double-check on that, only allowing one to teleconference in. I can let you know.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Is there a public comment on it?
Oh, I'm sorry, any public comments on this? This is a public hearing, then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is, uh, staff communications and council communications.
Uh, I wanted to let the council know that at our planning commission meeting on March 7th, um, there's also another large project that the planning commission will be considering that night. And that is that we have a, a new facility for the Toyota auto dealership that is in town. Uh, they've come in and they've made an application to build, uh, a new 40,000 square foot sales, uh, service facility, um, they-
God love them.
They, they will stay in business, uh, during the construction because, uh, they're combining two parcels there and the new building is going to go in an area that's currently used for auto storage right now. Um, so, um, just wanted to make you all aware that we have that application, uh, on the 7th as well.
Yep, very good news. Thank you.
Susan, you're gonna, you're gonna do both of those in the same night?
Uh, we're gonna-
You're gonna get a lot of public input on this thing next door. It's not gonna be a small turnout, so.
Uh, we actually have quite a large agenda for the 7th. Uh, you know, the planning commission only meets once a month now, so, um, uh, our meetings have been a little fuller and a little longer.
Is it time yet to have, to go back to twice a month for the planning commission?
Uh, we're, we're starting to have a real lull for, um, we, we do on occasion, if we, if we have a lot of applications coming in, uh, but right now the once a month seems to be-
Which one will be first on the agenda?
Uh, I will, um, have to go look, I believe that we put the, um, parking lot as the, as the first public hearing.
Be good to know that, 'cause there's a lot of public coming out, so you wouldn't wanna wait through the other agenda item for that, so, we could find out how.
Yeah. And we can talk to the chair of the planning commission, they often move items around if there are a number of people from the public there to speak on one item.
Okay.
Any other, uh, public comments? While I was reading these, um, old newspaper articles, I came across one, there was a proposal for a 13-story, 90-room, 90, uh, unit apartment complex on Cliff Drive, right, going right down to the beach. And, uh, it would have, it was gonna be 15 feet above the mean high tide level and, um, I don't remember hearing about that one before. And it certainly would have a great view, but, but crazy things have been proposed-
The dream inn, isn't it?
Yeah.
It wasn't, and there was also, there was also two towers proposed at Frederick Street at the end of it, at the harbor. And that's where the high-rise ordinance came into effect-
Really?
-with the city of Santa Cruz, yeah, from that.
And there was also one that was proposed, uh, over by the bathrooms, with a thousand-car parking lot built right in the ocean with riprap and then a thousand-car parking-
Now we're talking.
And, yeah, and then, then the building going up there, so, um-
I saw that, I saw that rendering.
Yeah. 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 So there's been some funny things proposed here.
But you couldn't walk your dog in that parking lot, because technically it was the beach.
I know. Yeah. Okay, then, we, we don't have any other, uh, items of business, thank you all for your patience and interest and great work. Thank you all very much.